Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five Asheville City Council meeting. If you could just take a moment and silence your cellphones. Also, if you haven't already, you can sign up to speak on tonight's agenda by stepping out to the hall and signing up, and it will populate on a Google Sheet right here in front of us on our computers. And if you would first please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to move right into the consent agenda. Counsel, do you have any questions, comments, or a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I just have a comment on item L. We don't need to pull it or anything. It's just, we got some information from the agenda briefing that this is a good news item because it's the third project on our go-bond construction. And if you're interested in what's going on with the bond program from two thousand and forty, two thousand and twenty-four, or what we finished in two thousand and sixteen, the capital improvement plan or Helene recovery, just Google Asheville Bond Dashboard, and you can pull it up to see the status. You can search by zip code and the amount that's been committed and spent.
And thank you for that. And also, please note for item F, the amount is actually slightly higher, twelve million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-two cents. Just wanted to make that typo, fix that typo. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. I do have two people signed up to speak under the consent agenda. Folks, tonight you will have three minutes to speak, just like any night unless you're one of the ones who has several people yielding their time to you, and then you'll have ten minutes. They'll watch the lights on the lectern. Green means go, orange means you're getting ready to stop, and then red means stop. Maggie is our operator there, and she, she'll scowl at you if you run over, but I'll have to gavel you down if you do. Our first speaker tonight is Paul Howell. And then, just so you know, our second and only other person signed to speak is Bruce Waller, so just giving a little advance notice.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, City Attorney, City Manager, Assistant City Managers, and the crew that holds everything together, Maggie. You know, I be thrown off about that Pledge of Allegiance, and it's wrong. It should be said, "We, the people of Asheville City Council, do not pledge our allegiance to the people of the city of Asheville and to their trust, which they put in us to be the executors of their will, by continuously convening one city under God divided, without unfair liberty, justice, and equality for all." That's what y'all should be pledging, because that's what it is. You don't feel that way about the United States, how can you feel that way about your own city and don't feel that way about the United States? But anyway, about the streets, reducing the speeds on the streets, which is good, a good thing. Yet we all know, with my dealing with y'all through the streets on Woodfin, the Woodfin Avenue over there, getting the speeds reduced is one thing, but getting it enforced is another thing. So I congratulate all the people that came up here for the streets to be reduced with the speed, but you still have a fight ahead of you making sure that it gets enforced, because people still speed regardless of those signs. I have witnessed people on Woodfin Street dodging cars. I've had a city council member standing down there with me when the cars come speeding through the red lights or what through the lights. I had state senator standing down there when the cars come speeding. I contacted the street division, Chris, I talked, I contacted him, and I seen the signs going to be put up and all that stuff, but signs don't mean nothing when you're not enforcing the law. I'm not going to use three minutes because I didn't compare, oh, I will say this right here. In the search for our new police chief, can we please, can we please keep him in-house? Because our last three police chiefs from out of this state, out of this city, have really tore the pocketbook up. So let's not disrespect our locals and keep them in mind when it comes time for promoting. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Waller?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, Counsel, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. All right, we're going to move on to presentations and reports, and the first presentation we're going to hear is the Community Reparations Commission final report, and I'm going to hand it to City Manager Deborah Campbell.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This will be the commission's presentation, providing the final report to Counsel and their closeout in terms of the work of this commission. I want to say a heartfelt thank you for all the work that you all put into this process. And with that, I believe that Ms. Little and Ms. Mays are going to present on the recommendations from the report.
Ms. Babbette Mays, everyone. There she is.
So I'm going to say this before you start to... Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair and the rest of the City Council. Before she starts, I'd like to say first, we had, we lost two people that were very important to us in this process, and that was Mr. Bernard Alafont, who was part of Chestnut Hills, and he worked in economic development. And the next was Dr. Dionne Greenlee Jones, who was also a facilitator, a liaison, and she worked with health and wellness. So I wanted to start with that, so.
Ms. Mays, will you get a little closer to that microphone, please?
I can talk loud, that's why I didn't try to get close. And then plus, we have some members here. I'd like for them to stand that are part of the commission who have worked so hard with us. If they would just stand for a minute.
Thank you.
That's Mr. Dwayne Richardson, Mr. Christopher Gordon, Mr. Dwayne McAfee, and Mr. Roy Harris. Some of the rest had to work, and so they have not gotten here. So we'll just go on and proceed. You going to call me now? The purpose of the presentation, to present to City Council the Community Reparations Commission final report and update on the project closeout. The mission, the Reparations Commission is empowered to make short, medium, and long-term recommendations that will make significant progress toward repairing the damage caused by public and private systematic racism. The City Council July fourteenth, twenty twenty, resolution tasked the CRC with the following: issuing a report in a timely manner for consideration for incorporation into short and long-term priorities and plans, providing budget and program priorities for the following to include, but not limited to, increasing minority home ownership and access to other affordable housing, increasing minority business ownership and career opportunities, developing strategies to grow equity and general wealth, closing gaps in healthcare, education, employment and pay, neighborhood safety, and fairness with criminal justice. Voted on and passed, all thirty-nine recommendations created by the CRC in June, two thousand and twenty-four. In the June, in August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four council meeting, the CR Chair and Vice President came before the City Council and requested a six-month extension to complete the work. Their request was approved. On March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, a CRC retreat was held by staff to begin the process of a six-month extension. During the retreat, the CRC members in attendance agreed to focus on the most impactful items from the extension request, possible creation of the five oh one C three, community engagement. City staff recommendations and CRC agreed to use an existing council already in place, African American Heritage Commission for the Advisory Council. Over the last six months, the committee of the CRC has been tasked with the creation of the five oh one C three to support the implementation of reparations in city and of Asheville and Buckham County. Name that has been approved by the CRC, Forty Acres in the Land of the Sky Alliance Community Development Corporation, Forty Acres Lots R CDC. The mission statement has been created and approved by CRC. The mission of Forty Acres in the Land of the Sky Alliance CDC, Forty Acres, is to revitalize Asheville and Buckham County communities by creating sustainable economic opportunities, increasing access to affordable housing, improve education and health outcomes, and to reduce harm caused by criminal justice involvement. This will be based on data analysis and achieved through community engagement while being guided by the necessities and aspirations of low-income, economically disinvested people as well as those directly impacted and the descendants of the redlining urban renewal. The purpose of the corporation has been determined and approved by the CRC. The purpose of the corporation is to empower and to revitalize our community by developing affordable housing, fostering economic opportunity, providing equitable education opportunities, improving healthcare access, reforming criminal justice system, and enhancing quality of life for all residents. The initial incorporates were determined as the members of the CR, of the five oh one C three committee and approved by the CRC. Nonprofit entity has been incorporated with the North Carolina Secretary of State. Final presentation, CRC Community Engagement Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to share our work today. Report of work during extension, three points of interest. One, previously approved, thirty-nine recommendations. Second, recovery selections, recommendations aligned with recovery in Asheville and Buckham County, criminal justice, development, education, housing, health and wellness. Recommendations are, that are policy-driven, even that rather than budget expenditure-driven, Advisory Council, education, Asheville PD, creation of Community Board, Criminal Justice, additional funding conclusion, upholding our commitment to stop the harm. The final report update. Led by staff, a report-writing committee was formed in January, two thousand and twenty-four to create the final report. The Carter Development Group was chosen to conduct the final editing, editing and graphic design. The report was completed in August of two thousand and twenty-five. The next few slides will provide a brief overview of the recommendations included in the report. Do you want to do this?
Hi. So the Criminal Justice IFA focused on addressing and rectifying the inequities faced...
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. I'm Dawn Little, the Chair of the Reparations Commission. The Criminal Justice IFA focused on addressing and rectifying the inequities faced by Black residents with the justice system. Criminal justice recommendations that rose to, rose to the top and aligned with recovery. Funding for community-based support services, Black representation in law enforcement, mental health support for justice-involved people in law enforcement, especially impacted by, those impacted by Hurricane Helene. Economic Development, Economic Development IFA, economic empowerment served as the foundation of the Economic Development IFA. Economic development recommendations that rise to the top and align with recovery. Provides grants to legacy neighborhoods and public housing communities, establish business corridors, provide grants for Black-owned businesses. Education, the education IFA was committed to eliminating disparities that have historically limited opportunities for Black students. Educational recommendations that rise to the top and align with recovery. Universal funding for early childhood education, free, high-quality early childhood education and childcare. Gifting land campuses for cooperative community development programs. Gifting land for housing recruited teachers, housing recruited teachers. Hiring a reparations lawyer to add accountability measures. Health and wellness, the health and wellness IFA worked to, to close longstanding health disparities what that disproportionately affect Black residents. Health and wellness recommendations that rise to the top and align with recovery. Healthcare subsidy, healthcare subsidy, including the establishment of a dedicated transportation service for expecting mothers, ensuring access to prenatal appointments, birth classes, and hospitals, and a free health clinic. Black birthing and healing centers. Establish Black Mental Health Network. Housing, the housing IFA focused on confronting both historical and ongoing injustices and housing policies and practices that have harmed Black residents. Housing recommendations that rise to the top and align with recovery. Special attention needed to address damage to churches, homes, and legacy neighborhoods as a result of Helene. Create a new dollar lot program. We, the CRC, believe that we have completed the charge tasked by the City of Asheville Council and Buckham County Commissioners.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Salam Manaya Merritt. I am the Director of Human Relations, Anti-Discrimination and Compliance Department here for the City of Asheville, and I'm here to give an overview of the next steps for staff. Moving forward, well, first, I would like to thank the commission for all the work that they've done in the last three years, did a lot of hard work, and I appreciate all of their efforts during this time. So moving forward, staff will identify recommendations that are within the city's purview or area of responsibility. And then at our October fourteenth City Council meeting, we were requested the solution of the Community Reparations Commission. Thank you.
And so, Mayor, this is the conclusion. You have the full report that's presented by the CRC. And as Salah just said, staff will look through those recommendations, and we will come back to, to Counsel in terms of next steps.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you all for your hard work, and I know it's been a much longer process than you probably signed up for in the beginning, but we really thank you all for, for the work that you've put into this commission.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have one other report we're going to hear tonight, and that is the I-26 Connector Aesthetics Committee final report. I don't know why we bother calling these final reports when it comes to I-26. But, but anyway, maybe it's hopeful, aspirational, final report. So I have here that we have Ted Figura here to present on this.
Okay, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff, thank you for this opportunity to present the recommendations of the I-26 Aesthetics Committee regarding the new I-26 bridge going over Patton Avenue. My name is Ted Figura, and I am Chair of the City's I-26 Aesthetics Advisory Committee. Oops. Well, as you know, this change from taking I-26 under two, bringing it over Patton Avenue, was made during the design-build bit process. It is not a change that anyone wanted, but it was necessary, and the aesthetics committee was called together to recommend any ways to soften the impact of this bridge on the community and make the best of the situation. If further evaluation determines that I-26 can indeed go under Patton Avenue, the committee will return to its original recommendation that the bridge, as viewed from the interstate, needs no aesthetic treatment. The committee's recommendations for the multi-use path along Patton Avenue would remain, however. This is an early concept drawing of the bridge looking down Patton Avenue toward downtown Asheville, and this provided our starting point. We can divide our recommendations into four categories based on their funding sources. NC DOT has been very helpful and has agreed to pay more than nine hundred thousand dollars from the project budget to fund improvements recommended by the committee. The second category of recommendations are the city's responsibilities. However, up to four hundred and five thousand dollars of money already committed by the city was freed up because of project changes east of the river and can be used to fund improvements recommended by, recommended for the new bridge. Because the committee's recommendations in the second category do not exceed this amount, the city would spend no additional money for these improvements. The third category is landscape improvements, which will be paid with project funds. The only city cost will be future maintenance. And the fourth category is improvements the city will make at its cost and at its discretion after construction is completed. We'll take a closer look at the recommendations in each of these categories. Making the abutment wall on the south side of the bridge vertical rather than sloped is a major change implemented by NC DOT. This more urban design creates space for future public art, both on the wing wall and on the vertical wall under the bridge beside the multi-use path or MUP. NC DOT will provide all of the lighting for the MUP on the south side under the bridge and for the sidewalk on the north side under the bridge, plus pay the utility bills for this lighting. Then they will install the conduit for future LED display lighting under the bridge. They will also install the conduit for the Monticello-style pole lighting along the Smith Mill Creek Greenway, which is the MUP along Patton Avenue, including under the bridge. And NC DOT has agreed to eliminate the high-mass lighting around the bridge that showed in their initial plans for this interchange, replacing it with standard interstate pole lighting, a win for Asheville dark skies. NC DOT will use the color scheme for concrete and metal that the committee has recommended for the interstate. They will also minimize sign clutter and take important steps to minimize the noise impact from the bridge, which is of particular concern to the neighborhoods of east-west Asheville. Finally, NC DOT will help make the experience for pedestrians and bicyclists along this part of Patton Avenue safer and more pleasant. City staff will work with NC DOT to design an, an MUP path that meanders, including taking it further from the street traffic while under the bridge. NC DOT will also install pedestrian refuge islands at each crosswalk across Patton Avenue within the project area. The aesthetics committee made two recommendations that the city will pay for out of the surplus funds already committed to it, to in the existing municipal agreement. The first is an extension of the cycle track that is currently approved for the MUP over the Bowen Bridge so that it ends just west of the new bridge. This requires a widening of the Smith Mill Creek MUP along Patton Avenue. This improvement was requested by Asheville on Bikes so that faster bikes and other personal mobility devices, or PMDs, can travel safely along the MUP. Asheville on Bikes recommends that the city incorporate similar features to accommodate faster-moving PMDs such as e-bikes, hoverboards, segways, and motorized wheelchairs into all future greenway designs. Extending the cycle track along Patton Avenue comes at a cost of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. The other improvement recommended by the committee is to place a design on the horizontal element of the bridge, the parapet. This design evokes Asheville City Hall, trees, and mountains. NC DOT has offered to cover the, had offered to cover the bridge with the same stacked stone pattern used on the interstate. As with the interstate bridges, the committee decided that a stacked stone horizontal span is not authentic because the span would never be actually made with stone. However, because this bridge will be a gateway to the downtown area, the committee wanted to place a distinctive feature representative of Asheville on the bridge span. NC DOT has offered to contribute the cost of placing a stacked stone form liner on the bridge parapet an amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's a cost the city will not have to pay. Because of this contribution, the city's share is only seventy-four thousand, one hundred dollars. Again, this will be paid for out of the money that the city will not need to spend due to the changes in the interstate design on the east side of the river. The committee's recommendations in the third category to be paid for with the project's sizable landscape budget include planters similar to those on the Bowen Bridge strategically located along the Smith Mill Creek MUP. The committee has provided the city with a set of organizing principles to guide staff in working with the, with NC DOT to design landscape improvements for the I-26 corridor. Landscape design will occur near the end of the interstate construction period. For the area around the new bridge, the committee recommends landscaping to reduce noise impact, open vistas particularly of the downtown, and to connect the new bridge with the Bowen Bridge through consistent landscape design elements. With guidance from our City Council Liaison, Maggie Allman, the committee strove to find ways to turn the new bridge over Patton Avenue into a placemaking opportunity. To this end, the committee identified three areas of special opportunity and concern. The city would install the recommended improvements after the interstate construction is complete. The first of these opportunities is to install public art on and under the new bridge. The committee recommended, with input from the community stakeholders, that all bridge surfaces except the bridge parapet be smooth concrete to allow the installation of public art to the maximum extent possible. In this way, the bridge can become a celebration of Asheville's character rather than a detriment. What is placed on and under the bridge would be selected by the city's Public Art and Culture Commission. It should be colorful and vibrant and reflect Asheville's character. It could include not only painted surfaces, but medallions and sculptures. Another area of opportunity is enhanced lighting. Using conduit installed by NC DOT at no cost to the city, the committee recommends a display of colorful LED lighting under the bridge. The cost for this will depend on the complexity of the lighting design and the technology used. This slide shows some examples of underbridge LED display lighting that other communities have installed. As noted earlier, NC DOT is paying for the pedestrian safety lighting under the bridge. The committee recommended that the downward-facing contemporary light fixture shown here be used. This type of fixture will allow softer, more consistent illumination under the bridge, which is safer for pedestrians and bicyclists as they enter and exit under the bridge, a distance of at least half a football field. As recommended by the City's Greenway Committee, Monticello-style lighting will be placed along the Smith Mill Creek MUP. Duke Energy would install this lighting after construction is complete, and the city would lease it for a cost of less than nine thousand dollars a year in today's dollars. Community stakeholders expressed... I have just a little bit more. Community stakeholders express strong fears that this new bridge, with its large sheltered area and the long causeway running from the bridge to the river, as well as the seven acres of open space along the crossway, would be an invitation for homeless encampments. Activation of the area under the bridge through public art and display lighting are two ways to make the bridge a more public place and discourage encampments. The committee also recommended other design elements to discourage unhoused persons from using the bridge for permanent shelter. The committee, with the support of our Council Liaison, also recommended that the city activate the area north of the bridge so that encampments would... the area north of the bridge so that encampments would be discouraged in this area as well. Options include recreation, strategic landscaping, and storm water management. Although homelessness is a serious problem and people must find shelter, the areas under and to the north of the bridge are neither appropriate nor safe. The city should bring together multiple departments and begin planning for this future land use within the next 12 to 18 months. Thank you for your attention and your support, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Ted, this is Councilmember Oney. I've been part of this aesthetics committee process for the past seven years since before I was even on council and attending your meetings, and I don't think anyone in the community will ever know how many countless hours you personally and the committee members have put into this. It's a tremendous amount of work, and I just wanted to say thank you. You've obviously brought forward some recommendations to make this project better, and I don't want to take away from that, but I do also still have concerns about what this project means for our community, and that has to be part of the public record, too. And I just wanted to name, not as a question, but for the community and for the public record, that Durham right now is undertaking an effort to repair the damage of highway expansion in their community with a boulevard conversion. The report says, "Of all the options, the boulevard conversion option offers the greatest potential to reclaim land for community use such as affordable housing, public parks, and cultural landmarks." The other option they're looking at is a freeway cap or land bridge. This one is especially interesting to me because we've been told over the years that a cap isn't possible in North Carolina. It's not something that DOT does, and yet Durham is exploring it as a way to open up potential land reuse, development opportunities, parks, plazas, and community facilities directly above what is now a freeway. So, thank you for this package of recommendations and for the hard work that you've put in to make the project better within the framework that we're allowed. I also imagine that we do deserve better. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's been a privilege.
Well, we're lucky to have you and so many talented folks who can volunteer time to weigh in on such a...something that's really quite technical, so we very much appreciate Ted's running away, so I have no one else had a question. That's out of here. All right, we have...and I don't know, Maggie, do we have people in overflow or in the hall waiting for a seat?
We do.
Okay, looks like we've got some folks that are able to move on at this point and some...
There's a group that's working together downstairs, though.
Oh, so they don't want to be disturbed. Okay. All right.
You set a precedent, Mayor, from the last meeting.
All right, we have one other...well, no, we have...okay, we have the manager's report. I'm going to turn it back over to Deborah Campbell.
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. I have a couple of items for my manager's report this evening. I'll first start with employee recognitions. As I've stated on, I guess, every council meeting where we have employee recognitions, this is one of the most favorite things that I do as a city manager, is to shout out and share personal achievements, awards, and recognitions bestowed on our city employees, as well as to recognize them for the hard work that they do every day. And so tonight, I'd like to recognize Emily Ball on her appointment to serve on Governor Stein's Interagency Council for Coordinating Homeless Programs, and Dan Ferris, Kim Miller, and Chris Gentile on their outstanding and award-winning work documenting the Helene response at the WNC Nature Center. So, I'm going to ask Ms. Ball if she...if I could embarrass you and come up to the podium. Emily Ball currently serves as the Homeless Strategy Division Manager in our Community and Economic Development Department. She also is our lead staff person supporting the Asheville-Bunkham Continuum of Care. I'm pleased and proud that our own Emily Ball has been asked by Governor Josh Stein to serve on the North Carolina Interagency Council for Coordinating Homeless Programs. The Interagency Council is a state-level body that advises the governor, state agencies, and other partners on strategies to prevent and end homelessness in North Carolina. Emily's invitation to serve on this statewide council acknowledges her leadership of the Asheville-Bunkham Continuum of Care and her dedicated service to people experiencing homelessness. I think I can share with you that Emily has eagerly accepted the invitation and is grateful for the opportunity to serve on this council that will hopefully positively impact the lives of those who are unhoused across the state, but especially in Asheville and Bunkham County. So would you all join me in a verbal pass? And next, we have some recognitions for some folks that...okay, I was going to say, where are they? That you all know very well and communicate with every time we have things related to communications. Our own Dan Ferris, production manager, who served as the documentary director, and Kim Miller, senior communication specialist, who served as the documentary producer, are our proud recipients of the TELI Award for the WNC Nature Center Remembering Helene Documentary. And no, you all aren't going to get off without coming to the podium. Communications people.
And let me take your picture, the same.
Oh, no, y'all are doing that to us.
You always do it.
The TELI Awards honor excellence in video and television across all screens. This is a significant, hear me now, national recognition of creative storytelling. The video features the compelling storytelling of WNC Nature Center Director Chris Gentile, curator of Maintenance and Facilities Jeremy Trantham, and Assistant Animal Curator Safety Officer Joe Willoughby. The team's award-winning video highlights the impacts of Tropical Storm Helene on its animals, staff, and community, but emphasizes the resilience of the WNC Nature Center volunteers and staff. This recognition reflects the talent, dedication, and collaboration of our city team in sharing meaningful community stories. So at this time, would you all join me in a...
We have so many fabulous employees at the city of Asheville, really lucky their hearts are what drive them to do this work, and I got to say, Kim and Dan, during the hurricane, they were like my...they were my people. I mean, literally, we were...my husband was buying you gas. You guys were...I mean, you did things that I'm sure you never thought you were going to have to do, and you did such an amazing job. You did such an amazing job. And I think, so importantly, you brought information to the people and helped the people through that crisis. And with Emily, you know, I always joke with Emily, I'm like, "I'll do whatever you tell me to do, Emily." Such a wise person and such an interesting life story coming from Madison County down here in Asheville. So we had a...I learned a lot about your story recently, and I just so appreciate the dedication all of our employees have to our city. I just...I'm constantly amazed at how lucky we are to have such an incredible staff.
Yes, you are. So, in closing, at least on this portion of the manager's report, thank you, Emily, Dan, Kim, Chris, Jeremy, and Joe, for all you do. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so as she's pulling up the next presentation, our next report would be presented by Assistant Fire Chief Jeremy Knighton. Jeremy will provide an overview of the after-action report related to the emergency operations plan and staff's execution of that plan. Shortly, you'll see in Jeremy's key takeaways that the results of an action...after-action report is not about blaming or shaming, but about learning. How do we continue to improve and do better during emergency situations? This presentation will touch on highlights of the results of the assessment. However, a more detailed discussion of the findings and recommendations will be discussed at council's Public Safety Committee meeting scheduled for September 25 at 11:00. This will be a virtual meeting. Now I'll turn it over to Assistant Fire Chief Jeremy Knighton.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present. And what I want to talk about today is the after-action review and the process that we went through post-Helene. And as always, and again, as Ms. Campbell said, I'm Jeremy Knighton, and I have the honor privilege of leading our emergency management program here, and we are supported greatly by an awesome team, and two of which are in the very back of the room, and I'm a little blushing right now, but we're glad to have them. So some key takeaways. What this told us was, at a very high level, that preparedness pays off. We knew that. Helene proved the value of having a plan. Our investment in not only our infrastructure with the Emergency Operations Center, as well as the emergency operations plan, but also, more importantly, the process that went into producing that plan. The after-action review process confirmed that the planning and preparation directly translated into quicker decision-making, more coordinated operations, and ultimately finding a way to yes, keeping us mission-focused. Also, I don't think I have to tell this group, but complex storms stress systems. A lot of our institutional logic, many...I've gave a lot of presentations about this, and this storm, for us and for many, was just institutionally unprecedented. And so when extreme events strain every part of our system, multiple lifelines were down, water, power, communications, all failing many at the same time. There were some capacity and depth and partner issues that we have to improve on, that we discovered during this. And then kind of finally, for the key takeaways, continuous improvement is essential. You've heard me speak here about the Poetti model, the planning, organizing, equipping, training, and exercising, and evaluating. That system, anchoring into that system, will prove a solid anchor for our process moving forward, but also lights the way of the path forward. By following this model and then continuing to improve, we will continue to solidify trust within our community and ensure resilience for the next disaster. In order to go forward, we have to take a look back, and many of you have seen this slide, and we've talked about this slide before, but our process kicked off in January of '23. And what's on the slide is just a small snapshot of what we as staff and many of our stakeholders went through to produce that plan. I've also said before that a plan is nothing without the process that supports it, and this is what our process looked like. Many one-on-ones, countless hours, exercising not only at the 75% mark, but when the plan was 100% complete, following our own model and following what we said was the way and the way forward. We had seven annexes, and we also had our continuity of operations plan, which during Helene, both were active at the same time as we thought they were. And so this is kind of what our preparedness, what we went through. Little did we know, we would be preparing for one of the worst disasters to happen to our community in all time when we look back at it. Again, looking at response and complexity, how do we measure that? What does complexity look like? And this, again, is just a snapshot. This emergency operations plan, our staff, we were actively responding to this event even currently, but 156 days under an activation level that was at the extreme limit of what our planning assumptions were. 200 rescues, countless evacuations, over 1,000 miles searched along the banks of our river, 4 million water bottles distributed to our community, 250,000 meals ready to eat. The coordination and the process and the planning that enabled us to do that is exactly what that process in 2023 generated. We had tons of help. We had outside help, over 100 agencies. We coordinated volunteers. We coordinated staff. When we looked at our instructor...after the damage and after the impact, we looked at the damage to our building, stock, and many of the buildings in our community were damaged. And then public works, transportation, and then the water system. Not only the water system in response to the repair, and then the work that went into getting that water turned back on, and then toward the end of the response with the distribution of the lead test kits. These were all happening relatively at the same time. And our resilience, and our staff's resilience, and the team that I get to stand up here and represent, made this happen for our community, and we're very proud of our response in the midst of such complexity. So when we look at our after-action review process, we wrote a scope of work. That scope of work, I'll get into in just a second, but it was a...we hired a consultant to come in because we knew that we wanted a very external process and an external review at a very internal process and one that was very close to our hearts. But we wanted to be thorough because as good as we did, we knew there were opportunities to improve. So what the process looked like was interviews of some of the EOC's command and general staff, some of the decision-makers, department directors. We surveyed internal staff to the EOC. We surveyed staff that were connected to the EOC, maybe on the response level and the information flow back and forth, external stakeholders, elected officials, and then the document review. Many of the briefings that I stood up in every morning, I talked about document, 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 and we did, and we did that. And all of that stuff, we were able to capture progress not only from day to day, but the progress we captured in those documentation...in the documentation from our staff allowed us to inform this plan and not only inform it, but help us move forward. All of the complexity analysis that we did, situation reports, the one-pagers from our Joint Information Center, all that was reviewed to find those successes, but also those opportunities for improvement. The scope of the review, again, when we looked at what the scope would be, it's often unfair to...sometimes we want to compare to other cities. We want to compare two storms, storms of different magnitudes, but what we knew that we could compare to was the process that we collaborated on. We not only collaborated with our internal staff, we collaborated with those stakeholders in our community. And what we said, did we do, did we execute what we had written down and what we heard from our community and from our staff and partners? It was a citywide review. The external folks collected all the information from across the entire city. It was not a tactical after-action review. There was nothing tactical about this as far as things that were happening in the field. It was response-focused, but more response in the name of the emergency operation plan and the planning efforts that we went through. And again, it was based on direct feedback. We wanted that external collection of this data so that folks felt comfortable to talk and that were very vulnerable and would tell us exactly what they thought and how we could do better, which was a foundational element, not only transparency, but how we moved forward. So looking at the numbers, what this process looked like, 37 total responses. We did three different surveys. We surveyed elected officials, our external stakeholders, internal stakeholders. We conducted...the company conducted 33 interviews with a total of 46 participants. We left that up to a lot of our department directors and staff that were closely associated with this response, and we cast the net as wide as we could. Forty-five hours of interviews is what they wound up was the number, and then over 300 pages of interview notes. So 300 pages of the information was provided back to them. 450 documents reviewed, and many of these documents were multi-page in themselves. And so kind of a look at the findings, there were 108 findings. Many of the findings in the report show success, but also many show opportunities for improvement. There were 34 base plan findings, 70 department findings. So as we were reviewing what the information looked like, in the scope of work was written, they wanted to understand not only how did your department function, but how did your department function in... department function in the EOP and in association with the EOC? And then as a part of the review process, they conducted an after-action review process, and that's the picture you see there. Over 50 people, 53 staff members participated in this, many of the same staff that went through and were interviewed in the interviews and the surveys. Four hours in length, and what that was, was a strategy session. How do we inform the work plan and what the path forward looks like? And so when we came up with all that, put into the final document is what that looked like. So some of the categories we looked at, that we wrote into the scope of work that were collected, just many of them here, not only volunteer management, donations management, a lot of our coordination, what did our departments do in their own response and own operations center, county coordination, how did we support our personnel, and also the finance and admin. We knew that our response would be directly tied to the speed in which we recover. And so all of these went into informing that. Our public information and crisis communications, those one-pagers that were so important to our community, we wrote that down. We collected the information based upon that to help us inform those better, and that's one of the things that we'll do moving forward. So when we look at the, kind of an executive summary, we put all of those into kind of a high-level understanding of what was found. The citywide emergency management program, the Emergency Operations Plan was effective. However, in exactly what we knew, additional training and exercise are needed. The plan itself was little less than a year old when we put it into full activation at the extent of the planning assumptions that we created. Remember when we had the one-on-ones with many of you, we talked about scenarios from 2004, and we talked about what we thought bad looked like, and this kind of put us off the chart. And so the training and exercises is what we've, and I'll talk about that later in the presentation, but also collaboration with our partners. That is essential. Collaboration with not only our partners, but our community is essential and was essential throughout the response. Sometimes systems and processes didn't align, and we had to match our operational tempo and change it and pivot it to provide what our community need by developing those alternative strategies. And we'll talk about the path forward with that. Our community and the ability for us to sustain those critical operations was the mission, providing for the safety of those folks and maintaining those critical operations was the focus. And then, our emergency management program in and of itself must expand beyond the resilience or reliance of the EOP. So there are more things that are needed. There are more things to capture the progress that we made. There are other plans and additional checklists and one-pagers that we're going to codify and different operational structures. There was a lot of innovation wrapped around this. And so how do we codify that, even expanding beyond the limits of what we thought would have covered it in the EOP? So kind of a different, just a deeper dive into some of those summaries or findings. Our concept of operations, our Strategic Leadership Group, led by our city manager, was able to give direction, give direction. The activation levels were appropriate to the need. We measured complexity every 12 hours during this storm. Where are we now and where are we going? And then together, we wanted to inform those decision-makers in making sure that it was coordinated and proportional to impact. And that was extremely important and was called out in here. Plans did support our continuity. Despite the communication breakdown in our infrastructure, despite power outage, our departmental continuity of operations plans allowed for those city services to continue, but it also gave us the information at our fingertips to help those decision-makers to say what was first, what was second, how do we bring back online some of those city services, and what are those that we maintain? And then our battle rhythm, and this really speaks to not only the incident action plans that we created, but the rhythm that we were in when we were in the Emergency Operations Center, even though we were overwhelmed by the response that was happening, we were able to pivot and keep that flexible in order to make sure that those activities in there aligned with real-time community needs, while avoiding those breakdowns in coordination. That situational awareness and common operating picture and information flow within the EOC was critical. Having those right people, the right place at the right time for the right decision proved very valuable and supported the folks that were in the field doing the work. Another thing that was called out was the elected officials' guide work. Council was able to, we were able to brief in non-destructive ways that keep you informed, that informed your constituents without pulling away staff. We were able to regulate that as far as information real-time, but it also ensured that you had the situational awareness and continued understanding of what operations and where we were in the incident. Some of the things that we found were their opportunities, and we knew these opportunities were going to be there. The literacy of our EOP as far as throughout the staff, some of, many of the staff gave the feedback that some of our processes, they had to learn in real-time. And again, with the newness of the plan and the training that we were going through, we just hadn't got there yet. But this also highlights the need for citywide training. And so we've already started that process. We were doing it before, and we've picked up right where we left off, so that every department can confidently act under the EOP and understand those responsibilities. Bench depth, some of our bench depth in some of those key roles, like the liaison position, some of our finance administration staff and public information, we tasked those folks, we saturated them, and sometimes we had too few of people in there, and we know that. So some of that redundancy, and our challenge is going to be, how do we create more redundancy? How do we look into some of those, what goes into redundancy, and so that we don't risk the fatigue, the burnout, and then obviously underscoring the need to expand our training, the cadre, the folks that can teach this, not only for who we have now, but for our succession plan as we move in the future? And then again, as I said in the executive summary, some of those systems from our partners, maybe not aligning with our operational tempo, sometimes limiting our visibility, and again, one of the most complex storms that we've ever dealt with, sometimes delaying support, but also we had to find alternative ways. I said it a thousand times, and I think was echoed in our city manager, as well as our fire chief, said, "We have to find a way to yes, because that's what we have to do." And so finding a way to yes is exactly what we did. But this also highlights opportunities to not only find alternate ways, but engage in pace planning for critical resources, as well as highlighting the agreements and accountability, and then the performance of those systems that we depend on. Communications, while under strain, the one-pagers in the Joint Information Center proved very, very popular. Our radio, our AM radio partners, many times that's what kept us going, keeping those folks informed. But sometimes that there were unclear roles, rumor control, when you have the thin staff trying to communicate, the bench depth being that way, there's so many things happening in the name of communication that many times it was hard. So being able to quickly jump on the rumors, get to ground truth faster, capacity and gaps, some departments were stressed to exhaustion, and we knew that. And we saw a lot of folks step up in extraordinary ways. But we also need to support and figure out and show and prove, and provide for those clear policies when we reassign personnel, so that everyone's clear on that. And then, as we, this again focused on the Emergency Operations Plan, but how we respond, we recover. And so some of the recovery needs, as we moved into recovery, some of the things were highlighted by this after-action report. We thank goodness for the consultants and support groups, but our recovery framework, we kind of built that as we went. And so when we were going through that, how do we do that better? Now, how do we codify the things that we know? We know what recovery looks like, we know the challenges, and so then how can we accelerate that into the future? And now, the path forward. I've said this many times, but there is a certain, after one of these storms, and even my colleagues that have gone through something similar have said that there is a spirit of innovation from staff, from your community, around how, what is the path forward? And it's our challenge and my challenge as a leader to move us forward in our response and make it better. And so how do we broaden our playbooks? How do we take some of that improvisation out and codify some of the work that was done? How do we continue to contribute? Every department contributes, making us resilient. That equipping piece with the tools and the agreements, so that we can move resources faster, and then obviously, training. We anchor into our training, and many of the folks that commented in a lot of the workshops said that their training didn't let them down, and that was a real affirmation for me, for sure. Exercising, continue to make ourselves uncomfortable in the name of exercising these plans. It's not a situation where we win every time, because sometimes in these things, we don't win. But how do we learn from that? And those exercises is where we do that. And then evaluating ourselves every time, the consistency in our evaluations, those external looks at internal processes are very, very important to ensure that trust and move us forward. And here's just a couple of pictures, and when I talk about the path forward, the path that we've already started. On the left is a class, and you'll see many familiar faces from city staff that sat through the class. Up there in the front, leaders from some of our departments, a very, very diverse group, working through these scenarios, working through this training. And then on the right, September 2nd, we had our first exercise, dealing with after the strategy session from the AAR. There were 52 staff members participate in that and work through that exercise, again, making themselves very vulnerable, but all committed to the same goal, and that goal is resilience and how do we do this better next time? And then I'll follow up with the key takeaways. Again, preparedness pays off, complex storms and complexity stress systems, we know that. But again, this plan was an outside look at an internal process, and our continuous improvement is essential. And how we do that is the same way we responded, together with leadership, training, and that commitment. And our resilience begins with that commitment, so that we're better for the next one. And I will be happy to make questions.
If there are any questions.
I mean, how do you say thank you? I mean, there just really aren't words. So I'll just let us all feel the gratitude, because the response wouldn't have been possible without your leadership and your leadership chief, and thank you.
I have to say a couple of things, because it plays out like a movie in my mind. And I remember sitting at the West Asheville Business Association meeting, it would have been the spring of 2024, because you were on tour with our new Emergency Operations Plan and letting people know that it existed, that we'd made the investment, that we'd learned lessons from 2022 water outage, and how we were utilizing that investment. You really brought people into that process and helped us to be prepared, not scared. And then, from that very first day that we convened over in the station on Broadway and your leadership throughout, I know that you're not going to toot your own horn, so I'm just going to toot-toot over here. I want to say, I was reviewing my emergency response training notes from May 30th, 2024. I watched all the videos, and I read all the documents you sent, and I had eight buckets of questions. And you answered so carefully, you listened, and I felt like you really heard the issues that I brought forward from the community, and we used all of the things. I brought forward concerns about internal and external communications in case of tech or communication systems failures. In May 2024, before the storm, we discussed redundancy for phone and internet and our community's rich resource of local radio stations. The importance of engaging community partners, concern about the potential for known overlapping crisis of flooding landsides and wildfires, the need to test for muscle memory. My notes show the next test was scheduled for September during National Emergency Preparedness Month. We tested that, didn't we? I wanted to thank you personally, and also lift up mutual aid, community aid, neighborhoods, our radio stations, especially Blue Ridge Public Radio, the life-saving emergency response neighbors took at the street and neighborhood level. Folks who are used to exercising on our river were rescuing people from rooftops, because we were doing that emergency response at the street level. So I think this is an opportunity to celebrate and bridge gaps through capacity building for our electric grid, for food systems, for communications, so that we can take better care of each other moving forward. And it's not just when you, and Deborah talks about this all the time, it's not just the public safety staff you imagine in uniform, right? Folks who were IT and tech were on the front lines, folks in parks and rec, folks in sanitation, folks that normally are at the desk job in the water department, there were no days off, not for anybody. Everybody was all hands on deck, because we're all neighbors. I also wanted to say thank you to my colleagues on city council, the county commission, House Representative Eric Agar, Lindsay Prather, State Senator Julie Mayfield. Each day, the public didn't get to see it, but we were coming in first thing in the morning, getting our marching orders from y'all, applying pressure, advocating for what our community needed. Folks from across the state helped, fire departments, Durham County Commissioner Chair Nita Alom, local progress leaders across the country, New York Councilmember Sandy Nurse helped to get the Level One Incident Management Team. I think I had to ask you to spell it, because I was so stressed out, I was like, I don't know what to ask for. And you're like, we need this specific group, and the group from Hurricane Sandy is willing to come help us, we just need their permission. So Councilmember Sandy Nurse from New York helped to get that to happen. But I do have two questions. What does it look like to synchronize our systems-level Emergency Operations Plan and help neighborhoods format their emergency operations planning so we can better respond together? Does it fit under CDBGDR funding? Does it include appendix of input, so we can see all that engagement you're doing? And then, does it look like formatting it, so that if you move from Hall Creek to West Asheville to downtown, you still kind of know what to expect? Are we in the process?
We are. I think our Community Risk Reduction Division within the fire department is actively engaging in those meetings. We're also not only trying to create that, but the Community Emergency Response Team and what that looks like. We were just, some of our team was just in a meeting with the Hall Creek community last week, talking about these things, what that format looks like, how do we structure that, what can we give, one-page checklists, you know? And again, I think it boils down to that whole community approach, from the individual living at home, checking on their neighbors, the faith-based community, the whole community approach is where our preparedness is. So again, go rekindle those relationships. We're in Preparedness Month now. Go back to those folks that maybe have handed you a bottle of water, or you sat and watched maybe a video or listened to the radio about how to eat a MRE. Go back and rekindle that and maybe share a story, but also talk about how you, you know, what will we do next time? And what do we have now that we didn't?
So even like Stu Helm does local restaurant food tours, and he was suggesting this, I thought it was a great idea, is if you have a food pantry in your home, this is a great time to go check all the expiration dates and make sure we don't waste things, because there's people who are in need in our community now. So that's another way that we can honor how we show up for each other, is keep doing it. The second question I have is actually for myself and our community. What are we willing to do to retain the people who gain these recovery skills, to keep the people who stabilized and will keep us safe moving forward? Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I know, I just, first of all, thank you very much, and your work continues. You and I are presenting again on a panel along with Deborah and Brad as well, to this time, the North Carolina League of Mayors about emergency response. So I think we've, we're doing our roadshow, teaching people what we've learned from this experience, so this is very valuable information. One, you know, this is sort of carefully worded, and I appreciate that. And, you know, we broke ground and built our Emergency Operations Center and celebrated its opening not too long before this hurricane, and of course, trained on all the new emergency operation procedures that you helped draft. But it seems like one of the inherent tension points in North Carolina is that emergency management flows through the county, in every county, that's our structure in North Carolina, to the state. But then you obviously have some fairly significantly sized cities in some of these counties that have their own operations. The system almost seems somewhat more well-designed for smaller counties, actually, with smaller municipalities in them. And there were times where it felt like, well, first of all, the county moved their EOC, I don't remember, three times maybe during the course of this, which was, turned out to be fine, but just trying to kind of marry the two operations sometimes seemed challenging. I mean, everyone was doing their best, and everyone did, I mean... I mean, everyone was doing their best and everyone did, I mean, I don't think anything slipped through the cracks by any means, but it felt, I would be interested to know how, kind of how that'll be hammered out in the future. This is sort of just my rhetorical, it sounds like that's sort of been identified, and there's going to be some thinking around that. The other, the other thing that was, seemed like a real, kind of making the, making the plane on the runway, sort of, I don't know what the expression is, but in terms of operations with the hospital, of course, the hospital needed potable water and had to truck in potable water, and they were in their own sort of crisis mode and really managing that. And we've done a debrief with them and learned how they sort of pulled in resources to be able to keep their operations going. But I would be interested to know a little more about if we ever had something this catastrophic again, kind of what our game plan will be proactively in terms of the establishing those communications. And, you know, often with these things, you know, two people have a conversation, and it turns out there's a whole team having a team conversation, and they just don't even know it, you know, so there's that. But the, the other major institution that I think was a challenging in terms of this was the Housing Authority. And understanding, you know, the Housing Authority operates as an independent entity, unclear exactly what their emergency operation procedures, or if we'd ever had kind of a chance to sit down with them and do sort of a tabletop to see how theirs really worked versus what we could do with them. And I know Deborah is nodding her head because she got pretty neck deep in that situation. So, so, you know, just some of those kind of big partner entities, the VA, I mean, they seem like they could, they were doing great. I mean, you know, so every, there were different institutions that sort of handled this differently, but, but it would be interesting and important for, to understand how we're going to manage that if we ever, you know, hopefully we never do, but if we ever come up, up against something like this again.
I think the, the relationships are important. They're, they're extremely important. And I think the relationships, you know, have to be understood and tied to performance. And, and I think the performance is input and output. And so how we do that, again, it, it said we needed, there's opportunity there for us, and there's opportunity there for those stakeholders. And I think our challenge, when, when you see the word liaison in there and that called out, is what that looks like. What do those cooperator calls look like? And then how do we?
That's the code, okay.
How do we share?
All right.
Information, real time.
And, and as we said, we will have a deeper dive at the Public Safety Committee so that we can kind of flush out, this was high-level overview, but we're going to, going to turn pages and do all that planning in terms of looking at ourselves and, and our vulnerabilities in terms of the response and say, how could we have done better? Who do we need to engage in going forward? And most importantly, this is a community response. Emergency operations is not just the city or the county or the state. There are opportunities for individual accountability that really, really helps us. And I tell you another group that helps us are nonprofits. They stepped up in a way that was unimaginable. We also have to be prepared to receive help.
Yeah.
We were not prepared.
I was trying to figure out your, on your little, your buckets there in terms of, you know, it, it's hard because you can't really carry a staff load to manage a major disaster. You know, you can't hire that many staff and just have them sitting around waiting for a major disaster.
Exactly.
But when it, when it happens, it did seem like the, the, the offers of support were so overwhelming, it was almost unmanageable for a minute there. So, so just kind of try and figure out how to, how to manage that.
Totally agree. And I just want to echo what all of you have said in terms of our leadership through Jeremy. We heard earlier about employee recognitions and how great a staff we have and Chief Case and all of the folks in the back, Ross and Isaac.
They're all there.
Yeah. We really, really appreciate you all's work, and I know we have a lot of things on the agenda tonight, so I appreciate you all's time. Jeremy, you're a good one.
Thank you.
So thank you, I appreciate it. So Mayor, just finish this.
Six fifteen.
Yeah. Doing good. Doing good. Hour here at the time.
So Council, I have a note here that we're going to swap these public hearing items. I know, Kate, you're looking at your agenda, what's happening? All right, so we're, we're going to do the, it's Will Palmquist on both of these, so does it really matter? So first, we're going to do the second item, public hearing to consider amendments to unify development ordinance to, one, better align with North Carolina general statute and Buncombe County, two counties in their government practices by revising the number of members and appointments. Number two, remove quasi-judicial public noticing. And three, make submitting Board of Adjustment applications and administrative appeals more efficient by submitting them directly to the Planning Director or their designee rather than the city clerk's office. Take it away, Will Palmquist, explain these to us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Will Palmquist with Planning and Urban Design. I'll be presenting this zoning tax amendment for those aforementioned changes to the Board of Adjustment. I am here on behalf of our colleague, Sam Starvam, in the Planning and Urban Design Department who has shepherded these amendments so far through the review process. So essentially, the three changes are what the mayor read. They relate to the Board of Adjustment primarily, and the first item is regarding the membership composition of the Board of Adjustment. These changes are proposed to make the membership requirements of Board of Adjustment be in alignment with how Buncombe County administers their membership and also pursuant to North Carolina Session Law 201330. It will reduce the number of alternate members and the regular member and alternate member who reside within the one-mile boundary of the municipal limits that are appointed by Buncombe County. Second change is to the requirement, is proposed to remove the requirement for a published notice in the, a legal ad in the newspaper for quasi-judicial hearings except for special use permits that are reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission, when reviewing this change at their August meeting, proposed a condition that has been incorporated to still email the neighborhood associations within which that quasi-judicial hearing subject property is located. There are still requirements for the mailing of adjacent property owners for quasi-judicial hearings as well as requirements for the signposting. So those are proposed to remain in place. And then the final change is regarding how the Planning Department receives applications for things like variances that go to the Board of Adjustment, in that they would be received by the Planning Director or, or their designee instead of the city's clerk, which will make the management of those applications easier and quicker. So this was reviewed initially by the Board of Adjustment back in February of 2024. That was approved by, by the Board of Adjustment. It was also reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission back in May of 2024 for the conceptual proposal. It has been reviewed again by Planning and Zoning Commission at their August meeting and approved. This amendment was previously part of another zoning tax amendment relating to accessory dwelling units and when variances might be required for existing structures to become an ADU if they are not conformant with the zoning. That was decided at the meeting to be split apart into two separate amendments. The ADU amendment is still in the works, and we're working with the community to answer any questions or address any concerns they might have about this one. But this amendment pertaining, pertaining to the Board of Adjustment is moving, is moving forward in support before this evening. And that also includes that condition for the Neighborhood Association notification that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended. In regards to the consistency with this zoning tax amendment and the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, it is found to encourage responsible growth by promoting clear and effective communication between residents at all stages of development and to improve government efficiency. It also promotes responsible regionalism by improving regional collaboration, coordination, and communication, interwoven equity by strengthening community involvement in decision-making, and a healthy community by being more fiscally sustainable. Some other considerations are that these amendments would take these requirements and get them better in compliance with existing North Carolina general statute, also be clearer coordination with Buncombe County processes, and specifically has how it relates to items such as flood variances that are being reviewed that will increase the, the FAST team's performance to help with rebuilding structures damaged by, by the storm. Staff therefore concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommends approval of this zoning tax amendment. I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
I have one. We talked about this in the agenda briefing, and I think I have the answer, though it does make one sad that people don't read the newspaper the way we used to. I wanted to make sure that there was still going to be signage in the neighborhood, and it looks under, like under Section 7-5-20, that regardless of whether or not it's a legislative or quasi-judicial hearing, there will still be signage posted on the property. So that hasn't changed, right?
That is correct. That will remain.
Are we ready for a motion?
Well, this one's a public hearing, so let me open the public hearing. Hold on, that's okay. And I will close the public hearing, and I am ready for a motion.
I move to approve the proposed wording amendments to Chapter Seven of the Asheville Code of Ordinances and find that the proposed amendments are reasonable or in the public interest, are consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meet the development's needs of the communities, in that the amendments will, one, align boards and commissions with statutory requirements, and, two, improve the efficiency of city operations.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council, any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. All right, our next item is a public hearing to amend the conditional zoning of properties located at 1617 Hendersonville Road for the purposes of amending the site plan and conditions. Again, Will Palmquist.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present the conditional zoning amendment petition for the project known as Deerfield Retirement Community Expansion. Here you can see the subject properties that comprise the project site located at 1617 Hendersonville Road in South Asheville. I will take a minute just to kind of orient folks to the geography of, of these properties. The overall site outlined in red is 125 acres. The main area, largest parcel is 120 acres, and then there are 27 smaller properties that you can see outlined there that comprise about five acres. There is also a, a buffer strip of property, and I'll just point that out because this might come up in discussion later, that surrounds the subject property between the budding roadways, and that is actually owned by the HOA. That's associated with many of the homes that surround the area, and that's about a 50-wide, 50-foot wide buffer strip that exists there. So just wanted to kind of lay out the land a little bit for you all. The existing zoning on the site is already commercial expansion conditional zone. This property did receive a approval for conditional zoning back in 2021 for an expansion of their facilities. That was at a scale very similar to what's being proposed in this conditional zoning. Some of the arrangement of the buildings and layout and such are changing, which is prompting them to come back through the conditional zoning process. The existing future land use of the site is residential neighborhood, and that is not proposed to be changed or required to be so for this conditional zoning. So here is the site plan. I'll, I'll walk you through the details of it. I'll just start by saying that the project has been reviewed as a, really a conceptual kind of master plan, given the scale of the project and the potential for future phasing and so forth. There have been more detailed drawings submitted along the way. You might find that some of the information is still a little bit preliminary, given that staff has been reviewing it at a more conceptual level, but the applicant has been working to fill in some gaps if there's been questions from the community about details about the project. So overall, the project, the new building construction proposed is approximately 822,000 square feet. This is a combination of additions on existing building and new building construction. You can see that the existing Deerfield campus is located mainly in the northern section of the site, north of Salisbury Drive, and the majority of the new construction is taking place in the southern portion and in the middle, most of which is currently wooded. The expansion proposes a total of 261 independent living units, 10 assisted living units, and 24 health center beds. Regarding parking, 333 surface spaces are proposed with 69 structured parking spaces. Staff has done, and the applicant has done, preliminary minimum and maximum parking numbers to help with providing more information. These are still, I think, very fuzzy at the moment, given that the staff has not done a thorough technical review of the proposal. Essentially, staff has come up with a minimum of 325 spaces required for this expansion and a maximum of 607. The applicant will likely present information showing that number a bit higher at about, I believe it's 500 spaces minimum. So that number may be somewhere in, in the middle. Once we get the detailed breakdown of all the specific land uses, match it up to our parking code, run all the math. But that will happen at a, a future stage at the final technical review following any approval of the conditional zoning. The applicant is going to request a additional project condition regarding parking, which would remove the requirement for minimum parking. They are looking at the existing parking. This is where it gets a little more complicated. They're looking at the parking that currently exists on campus along with the existing uses and making sure there's enough parking under our code to support the existing buildings and the proposed buildings. They're finding that the number might be a little closer than they have maybe comfort for in, in this stage of the project. That would kind of help give them some flexibility going forward, so they don't have to build parking that's not necessarily required for the functions of the overall campus there. In addition to buildings and parking, what is also being proposed includes required landscaping, a 30-foot wide planted buffer that will surround the site where it is adjacent to single-family residential neighborhoods, tree canopy preservation, and open space. This slide kind of details the breakdown of the proposed building additions and new building construction, focused primarily on the two largest areas of construction, which include letter H, which is a new independent living building, which will be proposed to be five stories tall, consists of those 69 independent housing living units and 191,000 square feet in total, and also letter I. This includes, what are called hybrid homes, and are about 550,000 square feet. Twelve of these buildings total are proposed, 16 units each, 45,000 square feet each. So those two items comprise the majority of the new building construction, and then, as you can see, there are some additions proposed to existing structures on the campus as well as a new outdoor center. And then I think this slide is helpful just to kind of show the overview of what was proposed originally and approved under the conditional zoning from 2021 and what's being proposed this evening. On the far left is the approved conditional zoning expansion project, which had a similar number of, of square footage proposed. In the center is what's being proposed under this amendment. And on the right, you can see the new proposal in the red with the old proposal in the blue overlay. So instead of having two separate independent living buildings, that is now combined into one. Layout of the hybrid homes has been adjusted. And then really the main change that, that prompted the conditional zoning amendment is the change to the additions that are proposed on the existing healthcare facility that were not originally proposed under the original conditional zoning. There are a number of conditions proposed by the applicant regarding this project. The first kind of gets back to the point about this being a conceptual master plan-type project that may be phased and, and may take, you know, a few different phases to be fully built out, depending on how the applicant chooses to go about it. This condition allows, would allow for some flexibility in the overall This condition allows, would allow for some flexibility in the overall building sizes and proposed units, up to 10% from what's proposed today to the final plan, but that would not exceed the maximum square footage or unit counts previously shown. Tallest building proposed to not exceed 65 feet in height. The operation of the grounds maintenance building will be located off campus. That was a significant concern from the community and has been addressed by moving it off of the campus. There are funds proposed to be dedicated to allow for some additional landscape screening to be planted in that 50-foot wide buffer strip that the HOA owns to help kind of fill out that screening. A lot of the trees are more mature, a lot of the foliage is kind of taller up, and maybe it's not as effective as it could be, and those funds will go to that additional landscaping. A new sidewalk will be built on Hendersonville Road along the project's frontage, designed to city standards in coordination with NC DOT, final design and approval by the city traffic engineer. And there are internal sidewalks, walking surfaces, and pedestrian connections as shown on the site plan, ranging from five to eight feet in width. Also, there has been some considerable attention and discussion with the applicant and the surrounding community about the operation of the southeast parking area where the grounds maintenance building was previously proposed. This is a 135-space parking lot, maximum space parking lot, and there are additional conditions in the Exhibit E project conditions document relating to the number of spaces and vehicles to be parked there, details on the covered golf cart parking design, specifications on the site lighting, a provision for an eight-foot-tall privacy fence, shown in red on this drawing, temporary construction screening, and then additional details on the dumpster and trash compactor locations. So this was reviewed initially, that first conditional zoning, by the technical review committee in June of 2021. Given that the nature and kind of technical aspects of the project were not changing significantly, it did not go back through initial technical review committee review, but it will go for final TRC review at the appropriate time. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the project at their September 3 meeting and recommended approval, along with a few conditions that have been incorporated into the Exhibit E project conditions document. So staff finds overall that the project is consistent with the Living Asheville Comprehensive Plan, future land use designation of residential neighborhood, which is described in part as mainly consisting of single-family housing, which over time could benefit from having more diversity of housing types. It also supports the following goals in the comprehensive plan: to encourage responsible growth by prioritizing greater densities of development overall throughout the city as appropriate, increase and diversify the housing supply by ensuring a diverse mix of housing to accommodate a broad range of age groups, lifestyle choices, and affordability levels, and to increase access to opportunities for all by realizing goals for an age-friendly community. Therefore, staff concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission and recommends approval, and I'm glad to answer any questions you might have.
The current Exhibit E, at least that I'm seeing, says 135 vehicles in standard-sized vehicle spaces. Are we still at that number, 135?
That is correct. In that southeast parking lot.
To maintain consistency with my request for conditional zoning, is the applicant pursuing any renewable energy options and/or is there anything preventing the future adoption of renewable energy options for this project?
Sure. I'm not aware of anything preventing that ability in the future. I'm also not aware of any immediate plans for any alternative energy installation on site, but I'd be glad to defer that to the applicant to address.
And where are we at with tree canopy preservation requirements?
So tree canopy preservation will be required for the entire site. We have to look back at the TRC report from 2021, but essentially that entire 125-acre area that Deerfield consists of would be calculated through that requirement. I believe, if I recall, on the last final review of the initial conditional zoning, they were meeting really the vast majority of that requirement through the preservation of tree canopy, but they might have some updated information on that. That was not reviewed extensively at this phase of the project.
Okay, thank you. And then the two, I guess, curiosities that I have. In general, I'm just kind of a little bit perplexed about the master plan approach to conditional zoning. As I'm reviewing the documents, there are some things I typically expect to review that aren't in the packet, so what's missing that would be in a typical CZ process?
So at this point, what's before you this evening in the Exhibit D site plan drawing does mostly, if not completely, consist of all the drawings you would typically see during a conditional zoning review. Those were provided as supplemental information since the time they initially submitted. Things like stormwater plans that are still very conceptual were not initially included. Detailed landscape drawings were not initially included, and that was kind of in response to the level of detail and certainty they had in their development drawings at that stage. So staff was willing to accept that and take it through as a more conceptual review, even more conceptual than a typical conditional zoning process. We've done it a few times for projects recently that are larger and more complex and might take more time to work out the details on.
Okay, so our UDO allows for this kind of master plan level review without those documents?
The UDO is not very specific. Staff has checklists for conceptual reviews for conditional zonings, and we are able to administer some flexibility around those things. We're not necessarily super tied down by the UDO itself.
Thank you. I do have questions for us around the conditions, but I think they're related to the neighborhood questions around parking amounts. I did talk with the applicant about permeable parking surfaces, which I'm thinking I might just add to all my CZ requests, like the renewable energy. It's coming up a lot around, do our development standards give us an option for some voluntary support in our stormwater efforts? So I'm wondering if, in addition to reducing the parking, which we usually have an appetite for, could we ask for a permeable instead of impervious surfaces? And then traffic, what I was hearing the neighborhood talk about is a request for a requirement to use the main entrance.
For construction.
Yeah.
So the applicant is going to present here shortly, so maybe some of this will be addressed. But if there are other questions, I think Brad is going to, his steam's coming out of his ear, so he's trying to figure out about the permeable versus impervious.
Well, and most people think gravel is pervious, but it's not. I'm trying to think the last time we saw kind of a concept plan. I'm thinking it was the big project with the Y.
Aspire.
Aspire, right?
Project Aspire, we reviewed as a conceptual master plan. Also, the Ferry Road project that the county proposed was reviewed in a similar way, and you might recall there were some conditions around that that were kind of baked into some flexibility, since it was such a large project and might be phased over time.
Well, I think this is, let's hear from the applicant, I guess.
Any other questions for Will?
Not right now.
He's not going anywhere. No, okay. Now, it's time for the applicant. So I know Bob, you're here, and you may have other members of your team, so please come When they built this building, I think they had their council meetings in the morning, don't you think? Because the sun just shines right on.
I've never seen those windows open.
Well, because they would blind us if they were, yeah.
No, she said, yeah.
Not, that's perfect.
I'd be very fresh.
A sun would be on the other side of the building.
And when they designed this building, the average human was a little smaller. It was easier to get in the city.
Oh, true, small humans, yeah.
Mayor and counsel, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Bob Osteen with the local law firm, McGuire Wooden Visit, and I'm here representing Deerfield in its effort to expand its facilities on Hendersonville Road here in Asheville, South Asheville. Deerfield has been at this location, serving retirees here in the community as a continuing care retirement community for 70 years, been successful in that effort, but in order to continue that success, Deerfield needs to update and expand its facilities and services, and that's why we're here. Here with me tonight are Livy Bush, who's the president and chief executive officer of Deerfield, Chris Day of Civil Design Concepts, our project engineer. And Chris and Livy expect to speak. Also here are Robert Chandler, the chief financial officer of Deerfield, Keith Einsman, the chief operating officer of Deerfield, who can respond to some of your questions about sustainability. And we also have our traffic engineers here from GFT, and they can provide more informational traffic. There is no way that I could do all of this, so I need a lot of help. I want to say thanks to the staff, especially to Will Palmquist for their meticulous work on this. Will has covered the application in detail and presented you with all the vital statistics. I'm not going to repeat them, but I do want to emphasize a couple of things. First of all, Deerfield is a continuing care retirement community licensed and regulated by the state, and there are certain things they have to do, certain services they have to provide, but it's not your everyday community for senior living. It's a, this, and secondly, this is an amendment to the existing conditional zoning. That existing conditional zoning was put in place in 2021. Before that, in 2008, there was a conditional use permit as part of the process we used to use called special use zoning. Don't do that anymore. And before that, it had site plan approval from the city. Before that, it might not even have been in the city. So, but the point is that Deerfield, this property and the facility have long been subject to various special zoning and land use rules regarding how it can be developed and used. Will Palmquist explained that this amendment involves some reallocation of uses within the campus and some internal rearrangement of buildings and facilities, but it's an overall reduction in the density of the project. Deerfield project has, the Deerfield project team has met on numerous occasions with the neighbors and over the course of many months, including the required neighborhood meeting. We have made some major adjustments to the site plan as a result of that, chiefly the relocation of the grounds maintenance building from the corner where the southeast parking area is to an off-site location. Other changes, and that was a, if you look at the public comment that's been posted online, that was a big deal, and so we were glad we were able to do that. Other adjustments made include the enhanced buffer. This property is protected in at least three ways. One is that there was, as Will mentioned, there is an existing buffer put in place by the previous owner of the property. Secondly, there's the underlying city landscaping and buffering rules, and thirdly, there are a number of conditions that call for enhanced buffer. So that's a lot of protection for this property, for the neighboring properties. Other adjustments that we've made were to the lighting of the space down the southeast corner. All of this and more will be covered in detail by our design professionals, but importantly, I want to emphasize this, these will all be conditions on this approval, not something that we have a choice not to comply with. They get signed by the mayor, they get signed by us, they get recorded. We don't have a choice of complying or not. Now, one of council's chief considerations in any rezoning is the extent to which the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Can you speak into the microphone a little bit more? I'm having a hard time.
Sorry. One of the chief considerations for council is the extent to which this proposed rezoning complies with the comprehensive plan and other plans of the city. The comprehensive plan is Living Asheville from 2017. It's already getting some age on it. I can't believe I said that, but that is the current comprehensive plan, and it's consistent in many ways, some of which Will has identified for you. I want to point out some more. One is that it promotes strategies to allow seniors to age in place. Asheville is a community that has a lot of senior residents, and so we think this is important, but that's exactly what a continuing care retirement community does. In Deerfield, the progression is independent living, assisted living, skilled nursing, and there are other services like memory care that are offered. The second way in which it's consistent with the master plan is the form of development. This whole campus acts as a buffer between a very busy Hendersonville Road and the properties to the west, which are not in the city, but they are residential, and so it's a buffer between the commercial area and the residential area to the west of us, chiefly including the ramble. And most of the more intense activity on the Deerfield campus is focused on the interior parts of the campus. Third is Deerfield sustainability work. It is very much in line with the city's goals as expressed in Living Asheville and in the Sustainability Master Plan. Back in June, when we thought this matter would be going to the Planning and Zoning Commission in July, I sent Will Palmquist a letter that outlined the ways in which this complies with the master plan, and attached to that letter was a summary of the efforts that Deerfield has made over the last several years on sustainability. I'm not going to go into detail about them now, but I will say that that has not been inexpensive to do that. I think that over the last 10 years, they've invested something like $3 million in sustainability efforts. But they, I have been impressed with the way that they really believe in this, and they undertake sustainability without being asked to do so. So it's understanding concern, Councilmember Rodney, and we can go into more detail about what they do on campus there. Finally, but not least, is the consideration of community benefit, which is important in any conditional zoning consideration. And here, I think Deerfield's work out of the community speaks for itself. They have made substantial financial contributions to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund and to other efforts like homeless relief efforts for the unhoused, and there are others. Overall, since about 2019, that's come to over $4 million. But financial contribution is not all they do. The members of the Deerfield community are out in the broader community, you know, working for organizations like Habitat for Humanity, Tropical Storm Hawaiian Relief Services, that kind of thing. They're active in their community and in this community. This is a, this expansion, if approved, will enable Deerfield to continue its mission and continue its good work out in the community that it's been doing for the last 70 years. I've seen a lot of projects in my law practice, and this one is certainly better than most. It's one of the best I've ever seen. And respectfully, we would ask you to adopt this conditional zoning amendment with appropriate conditions, and with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Day from Civil Design Concepts, who can sort of walk you through the details of the project better than I can. We'll be glad to respond to questions either at the end of this presentation or now, or at the end of the public hearing. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
So Chris is going to kind of get more into the nitty-gritty.
Yeah.
Of course, all right, he's looming behind you. No, he's standing behind you.
Always. We spent a lot of time together the last couple of weeks.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here to get into the nitty-gritty. Actually, I'm going to try and keep it really short because Will did a great job. I did want to bring up the Exhibit D. How do I do that name? Oh, that was easy. Thank you.
Maybe make it bigger, though.
Yep.
At the bottom of the screen is your little plus.
Gotcha, gotcha.
There you go.
I'm gonna, we'll go here. This will be good for, and I've got one other slide. I heard one of the questions that came up just a second ago asking about examples of master plans and processes that were similar. Those were great examples, Aspire, Ferry Road. I would also say that the 2021 CZ approval that council did for Deerfield is another good example. So this is such a big project. We have, our schematic drawing set at Civil Design Concepts has like over 200 pages. So what we did to try and keep it So what we did to try and keep it simple was we took the approval from 2021, and we basically mimicked that with our original submittal. Now, as Councilwoman Roni said, what you see before you looks different than that, and that is because this project has taken, taken on quite an evolution of conversations with the community, conversations with the neighbors, providing a dip, changing modifications to the plans and changes to the plans. Bob told you what hasn't changed in terms of the uses that's being proposed here from the approval in 2021. What I'll tell you that has changed is we have less impervious. So we have almost an acre less of impervious than what was improved, what was approved with the 2021 plan. We've also eliminated all, we've almost all, we've eliminated all of the jurisdictional impacts to wetlands and streams in this south campus. So this area that you see before you previously was proposed and approved to have water features that pumped water around and kind of created a, maybe a, a nice environment at the mall, but it's not what we're looking for here. This plan protects more of the canopy, the forest, and the existing environmental features. And so that's something that we're proud of with, with the changes that have occurred To date, this is my 20th year doing this type of work in Asheville, and I've not had a project that has gone to, spent this much time and interacted with the community and neighbors as this one, especially myself personally. The last time I counted, we were over 30 Zoom meetings, neighborhood meetings, in-person meetings with over 60 people present, phone calls. That was, we, we've, we've exceeded that. Similarly, we have gone into a lot, a lot of detail as it relates to this southeast portion of the property, and rightfully so, because in those neighborhood meetings, in the in-person meetings, and all the conversations and the comments we were getting, that was what was being asked about. That was where the concerns were, and so that's really where we dialed in, and while there's still kind of master plan-ish level softness on the project as a whole, we've really tried to dial in this portion of the property. So you'll see that most significantly in these landscape buffer plants, but also in these cross-sections that come, sorry, is there a, trying to find the fast button. So this southeast parking area, this is, this is where a lot of the conversations have come in. When Biltmore Farms sold these south woods, the 30 acres, to Deerfield for the expansion, they did it with a lot of foresight in place. They took, and as Will mentioned, the property line doesn't start for 50 feet in from the existing Racket Club Road, and then they put deed restrictions on the property where the existing trees for the next 35 feet had to remain in place, and then they were building, building restrictions going another 30 feet into the site. You can kind, you can start to see those here as we look at the site, and this is right at Croton Court, which has been a hot topic. So as you look at Croton Court on the side, you see Racket Club Road, you see the Ramble property, which goes all the way to approximately 50 feet in from Racket Club Road. Currently, at the property line, there's an eight-foot chain-link vinyl-coated fence. After that, we have the, the undisturbed area of tree preservation, followed by a, another eight-foot private, solid privacy fence that we are proposing based upon conversations with the neighbors, before we then drop into our site. This was all done, you know, in an effort to take the area on this southeast portion of the site and screen it to the maximum extent possible. Concerns that we heard in those conversations, the big ones we heard were a grounds building. This project started with a grounds building that sat in this general area. After lots and lots of conversations and a lot of deliberation, as Bob made reference and Will, the project has agreed and is moving the grounds building off-site. The grounds building, the current grounds building is already in kind of the same area on the west side of the site. It's been there for over 25 years. It will, it will not be here any longer. It is moving, with this, with this request tonight, we are moving that off-site. After we moved it off-site, I thought this project was going to get really easy because that was all the concerns we heard. What I found out at that point was a lot of concerns over what, what's going to happen in this parking lot. And while I can draw lines on a set of plans really easy to draw a parking lot, describing in words what a parking lot is and is not has been a, has been a fun adventure. You'll hear from one of the neighbors, John Nicolay. I really appreciate his time that he and I have spent together. We have had over 50 emails directly back and forth with each other. I've met onsite with he and some of his neighbors three times for a total of many hours and numerous phone calls. And where we got to was these project conditions that you see, and some of the specifics where we go in there and we outline that this parking lot is intended to be used just like any parking lot we have onsite. It's not intended to be the back of house where we store used appliances. It is a parking lot that we're using just like all the other parking lots. And so John and I went back and forth to try and create and craft language, and, and I'll, I'll hand it to John. He, he really wordsmithed this much better than I did. We got to a good spot of what we agreed upon would kind of convey the intent and commitment to what this area would be, the restrictions associated with it.
And it's, are those changes in our Exhibit E?
They are. They are, I think it's number 12, like maybe A through J. I don't have those up in front of me.
Will, are you going to nod your head to that?
Did I get that right?
Yeah, okay.
I've memorized a few of these project condition numbers because they've been
Yeah, that was pretty good.
A lot of conversations. And specifically, J was the, where we really got to Mr. Nicolay and I did in terms of trying to say what this parking lot would and would not, how it would and would not function.
Okay, so let me, John, so first, as Bob knows, I have a special affinity for Deerfield. My dad was a chaplain there for many years. I'm particularly appreciative of the willingness to move the maintenance facility. I think the solution you came up with regards to the buffer and offering money to the neighborhood association or their designee was a great step forward. Calls that I have taken and emails seem to be suggesting that the 135 number is still too many for parking on the south side. Can you tell me, is there a reason why you can't do fewer? And by fewer, I mean 100 or fewer?
Let me do my best to explain where that comes from, and it kind of goes to a side conversation that really just became very prominent over the last week, and that is how many parking spaces do we need out there? And the fact of the matter is, is the, well, one, our UDO has great minimums and maximums, but it does, and it has pieces and parts of what happens at Deerfield. There's a lot of different things that happens at Deerfield. It really acts as its own micro-community. We have single-family homes up at the north. You know, those folks, they, they, it's not a big traffic generator as we leave the property onto city and DOT streets, but internal, you know, there's walking paths everywhere, and a lot of the residents walk, but a lot of the residents get in their car, and they drive over to the dining hall, or they drive over to the fitness center. And so today, as we've analyzed it, what they feel out there and know, and what we've looked at when we look at the pieces and parts in the code, is that we need more parking.
Do you have to have that number there?
We really have, I've, I have tried to find and squeeze parking anywhere and everywhere onsite. This area, the removal of the grounds building really worked well. It was, it was kind of like, I'm the eternal optimist, see the glass half full, I'm like, okay, we got rid of the grounds building, this is a huge win for the community. If we could get, make it a win-win, and we could actually, while we were, were short parking, we'll still be short parking, if we could make that a little bit better on our side, then it felt like a good compromise. This area that we've got it proposed, we are able, you know, when I started this, when I first removed the grounds building, I put 150 parking spaces there. Starting with conversations, including conversations I had with Mr. Nicolay, we pulled that back to 135, and we were able to maximize riparian buffers out there and reduce the, the impacts. At this point, we really, we need, we need parking onsite, and so that's why we're respectfully requesting the 135. What we've also done is, as you made reference, the, the privacy fence, we are preserving existing canopy there, but we have also proposing to plant on our property in that property, between the privacy fence and the property line, an additional 444 plants to try and fill in, but we have surveyed all of the trees in that area so that we can be respectful of their critical root zones, maintain the canopy, but the storm really knocked out a lot of the understory, so we tried to fill that in. You made reference, and I appreciate that. Deerfield, then, during some of those site visits I had at the Ramble, we went onto the Ramble property to identify in that 50-foot swath, could we plant additional plants over here to further help screen so that, in all reality, it didn't matter if we had 200 parking spaces here or 135 spaces. Our goal was to really minimize so that the neighbors didn't see them back there at all. We also heard concerns about traffic. This project, we had a trip generation done by a traffic engineer at the start. We reduced the traffic from what was approved in 2021. It's a low-traffic generator, and it didn't require, it did not meet the city's threshold for a detailed TIA, but we did go further and have engaged a traffic engineer to evaluate construction traffic. Construction traffic is not a high-volume traffic generator, but it is, it is, it is something that we are, want to be sensitive to, and so we've hired a traffic engineer. They have met with Chris Carnes, they've met with the DOT, and are working on ensuring that access for construction vehicles is done so in a safe manner.
I'm a little, if you could just spell this piece out for me.
Sure.
So when the maintenance grounds were there, or that you, you were saying that there were going to be no parking spots there, and then, and then, if I get something wrong, then you took it away and you went to 150, and then it sounded like you went from 150 to 135. So help me understand how we went from, you know, being okay with the maintenance grounds on the, on the grounds with no parking spots to needing 135. That's the part I'm a little confused about.
That, it, it is very, when, as you'll probably hear from the neighbors, the continued conversations and the evolution of the plans have been something that have been a positive thing to get where we are today, but it does create a lot of confusion. There have always been, when it was submitted, there was a grounds building here, and there was a hun-, approximately 100 parking spaces there. So with the submittal was 100 parking spaces and a grounds building. We then removed the grounds building and we added 35. What, what's here today was to remove the grounds building and replace that with 35 additional parking spaces. So I probably confused it by making reference to the 150, but it was 100 and a grounds building. We committed to taking the grounds building away with the idea that, for us, needing parking, it could be a little bit of, we could take lemons and make lemonade out of it with the fact that the grounds building was no longer onsite. I think...
Do you have more things?
You know, I just wanted to kind of frame one other question, or one other comment on this, is Will brought it up, the more we've dug into the details on the parking, the more we realize that we need, that, that, the more it proves that we're underparked. With that being said, I had kind of been taking the easy road from all along, just like the 21 approval said, that we would meet the minimum and maximum parking requirements in the ordinance. I said, Will, let's just do that, this go-around. As we, as the question came up and we've dug into it, I am fearful that that is going to necessitate that we add more parking. And so similar to how council and the city have recently abandoned, removed minimum parking requirements in commercial zonings, we are asking to make that a condition of this project as well. We don't want a minimum parking requirement. We don't want to put any more parking out there than we need. It's, we're not, we're not a retail store that's trying to drive customers. We're trying to create an environment for these people to move to and live. We don't want any more cars, we don't want any more parking spots than we need to. At that, I was going to turn it over to Libby and let her talk a little bit more, the president and CEO.
So is that removal of the minimum parking in the conditions currently? So that would be an addition?
Two things in that, in those project conditions. One would be, I want, the number seven says that we will do the minimum and the maximum. We would like to strike the minimum and state that we don't have to put the minimum parking in. So as the details come in for permit final TRC drawings, if it's determined that existing and proposed uses out there necessitate more parking, we don't want to propose any more parking than what's shown here. This is, as, as we come here and I bring a set of plans, I'm trying to bring the most intense drawing. The conditions say that this parking lot will have up to 135. I don't want to build any more than I need to, so I want to strike the, the minimum from the code. The other clarifying item, which is super tiny, is through correspondence with Mr. Nicolay, he realized that the submitted buffer plantings totaled 398 plants, whereas we had had earlier, one of the evolutions showed 444 plants. It's not our intention to take that out. We will commit to putting in 444 plants in the buffer on our side of the line, and so just wanted to go on record for that. I'm available for any questions.
Can I ask you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we've, we've all probably had a chance to talk to folks in, in the community and the various attorneys involved. So it's my understanding that the new revised conditions that we're now looking at on our computers represent a compromise by some of the neighborhood working with you. You've described the meetings you've had with John Nicolay and coming up with parameters around this outstanding issue, that being the parking. Big issue was moving the building, taking care of. But are you forecasting for us that there might be folks that aren't aligned under the John, under the John Nicolay grouping, and so they might still be unsatisfied with the compromise reflected in our documents around parking?
I would say, yes, like, I've had, I had really great productive and conversations with Mr. Nicolay. We got on the same page as it relates to that standard 12A through J, that standard, well, it does, I think it might even say a number, but the, the recent flurry of discussions around that, John and I have not spoken about. So John and I spoke about the 135, but that's been, there's been a lot of water under the bridge since then. So it's, it's in those conditions, I think. I don't have any further.
Yeah, yeah, and there's some of the conditions around the types of vehicles that can be part.
That was the big conversation.
Yeah, right. So that's all addressed in here now, so that's what we would be voting on here. It seems like you've all done a tremendous amount of work to try to come to some sort of compromise here. I'm looking at you, but really all the, all the folks here. So, so Will, if there aren't any other questions for Chris, I think you had one more speaker for the applicant?
Yes, Libby, the CEO, would like to talk, and then we're all available for questions.
Okay, and we, we have a number of people signed up for public comment, of course, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mayor. I do have comments about Deerfield, so tell me if there's enough time or not.
Maggie's the one, she's...
Seven minutes, okay. Out of 25, here we go. Thank you. I'm Libby Bush. I appreciate you, Mayor, you council members, the city staff, Will, thank you, and mostly on behalf of Deerfield, we appreciate your consideration. I'm going to tell you a little bit more about us and our future thinking. We are a continuing care retirement community. This is the heart of what we do. Some of you on... Some of you on council know specifically what we do. As far as age range, individuals must be 62 years of age to move to Deerfield. Today, our youngest resident is 67 years old and our oldest resident is 103 years old. Today, we have 642 residents living in Deerfield. Deerfield is a CCRC and, as you've heard before me, is a unique congregate setting that is licensed by the North Carolina Department of Insurance. In our higher levels of residency, we are licensed by the North Carolina Division of Health Services. We are accredited by the Commission on Accreditation of Rehabilitation Facilities. We are inspected by licensing specialists and surveyors from these agencies in these areas, as well as food establishment inspections and fire marshal surveys. Today at Deerfield, we employ 369 staff members and abide by OSHA and all the different labor law requirements. We anticipate welcoming 75 new staff members during this project as we strive to be an employer of choice, including providing increased employment opportunities to Asheville. As a licensed CCRC, we are required to submit multiple, multiple things, including comprehensive financial information, annual financial audits, annual disclosure statements, maintain operating reserves, and submit quarterly reporting packages. In other words, as you've already heard, we aren't the usual neighborhood. We aren't the usual business. We aren't the usual organization. We are a community focused on creating the best possible life and care experiences for our residents and also our valued team members. Today at Deerfield, we offer various lifestyles and accommodations. We have residents who live independently. We have residents who live in assisted living and receive our intermittent support and care with activities of daily living and instrumental activities of daily living. We have residents who live in skilled nursing and they receive hourly and daily support and care. We have a clinic where physicians, nurses, and other, others hold hours and office hours. At any one given time, we could have several residents in the hospital out volunteering or living life in their Deerfield homes. We could have residents recovering from surgery, prepping for surgery, or preparing for their last days. We could have family members, loved ones, friends, and/or caregivers visiting our campus. These individuals could come from afar or if local, drive to Deerfield multiple times a day, daily, or per their own schedules. When one of our residents is dying, we could have loved ones staying at Deerfield to be close to their person. We could have hospice providers, other physician services, such as audiologists and podiatrists, visiting to see their Deerfield patients, our residents. With this project, we plan to continue to evolve our mission, and that is to enrich the lives of those who live and work at Deerfield and commit to be a leader in aging services. We are planning to offer more options for our residents. Some examples include growing memory support initiatives for those with cognitive impairments, including a dedicated memory support area of residency, introducing a group respite program, as more than half of our current and future residents are couples, introducing a short-stay area of residency where residents can receive intensive therapy to get back to their baseline after an acute circumstance such as a knee or hip replacement. Our expansion project has evolved over not just months, as you all know, but over years in a thoughtful, intentional way. The plan is for this project to expand our mission and bring more residences to our campus. This is something important to address. As of today, our waiting list totals over more than 1,600 households for people who want to live at Deerfield. At its core, Deerfield is a community of action-oriented, community-minded older adults living in various residences. They bring exceptional expertise, experience, passion, and energy to our collective work on and off campus. From delivering meals on wheels each week across Buncombe County to building and funding Habitat for Humanity Homes, partnering with local schools and literacy programs, giving $50,000 to the Carolina Mountain Club to help clear and maintain trails, specifically the Mountains to See Trail, as well as providing countless hours and financial resources towards a variety of local organizations, our residents and staff invest in making our campus and larger community better. Also, if you don't know this, through our Deerfield Charitable Foundation, if a resident ever runs out of financial resources, through no fault of their own, they never have to leave Deerfield. We make that promise to them when they move in. We anticipate this project will further solidify and grow this impact in these various ways. Finally, I finish with the hopes that this description of Deerfield helps with understanding the level of movement and activity that happens most every day. I like to say our residents are movers, doers and shakers, and indeed, they are. We also hope that through all the communication you've heard about, all the engagement you've heard about, and all the adjustments you've heard about, we have made this project to this project, that we have shown our commitment to not only our campus, but also to the surrounding community. With that, Mayor, thank you. Council members, thank you. I'm available for questions.
Okay, we, I'm going to go ahead with the public. Let's hear from the public. Okay, everybody, there's a couple folks that are going to have 10-minute slots. The first person signed up to speak is John Nicolay. And John, while you're making your way up to the lectern, I, you have three people ceding their time to you, and if those people, I'm going to call out your name and you'll just raise your hand for me. Patricia Elrod, thank you. And Spencer Elrod, okay. And Maureen White, thank you. All right, so you'll have 10 minutes and you've already seen what Maggie's capable of there, so she'll keep your time.
I know what Maggie's capable of. The two times she's talked, she's been calling me at 7:00 in the evenings to answer my questions.
She, I know, she works around the.
She works hard.
Do you, sir, want to have this on the screen or do, should we?
Actually, that'd be great.
That's fine, okay.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you, thank you. Mayor, council members, staff, first of all, many thanks. I don't know how you do what you do. And for those of us who listened to you a couple nights ago as you were designing somebody's buffer, we're even more impressed. My name is John Nicolay. I'm co-chair of a group of Ramble residents who came together around this matter. My wife and I live at 33 Croton Court. We live within 400 feet of the Deerfield property line. We're here along with a number of our Ramble neighbors who yet again are present to show their concern and support. Don't panic, only a few of us are going to speak. I'm a, I'm a retired construction person myself. I had 43 years in the commercial construction business. The relevance of that is for about a dozen years, I was involved, I created a business unit actually, and built CCRCs, continuing care retirement communities around the country, properties very much like Deerfield in terms of scope, scope and function. So I'm, I'm a fan of what the Deerfields of the world do, very familiar with it. You'll find no complaints about, for me, what they do. I've been involved in dozens of very similar projects of this scale. I have a pretty good understanding of the process, and I think that has helped me and Chris Day work together. I did point out to the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission that I had a full head of hair before I started working with Chris Day on this. As I told the Planning and Zoning Commission last week, as residents of the Ramble, we are not here objecting to Deerfield's right to expand their business. We have not gone there at all, for no reason to go there. We are not here to complain about their plans to build approximately 300 new apartments at the cost of a few hundred million dollars. What brought us here is opposition to their plans to place an industrial commercial maintenance facility 120 feet from the front doors of a number of our neighbors. Now, and you'll, and you've heard, good news is, that piece has been resolved. It appears as though they have fully agreed to relocate that facility. We've heard it reinforced tonight, and it's now been replaced by 135 vehicle parking lot. That, that's the current situation. This planned action will still have a negative effect on our property values. It will still cause some people to move from our neighborhood. It will still negatively affect the marketing of our homes by extending time on the market, and it is not at all in keeping with the character of the Ramble community. We live by choice in a quiet, peaceful, environmentally responsible, well-planned community. Frankly, we resent Deerfield's indifference to what were our legitimate concerns for a long period of months. So allow me a brief history. We initiated discussions with Deerfield last December to understand what they planned to do. This maintenance facility quickly caught our attention along with their proposed use of Racket Club Road as a temporary construction entrance for two and a half years. I will not drag you through the months of meetings and calls. You've already heard Chris articulate that, the ups and downs, the two steps forward, the three steps backwards. In short, it was not until the days before the August 6th Planning and Zoning meeting that Deerfield, at that time vaguely indicated they were considering relocating the maintenance building off campus. When they would not tell us how the parking lot would be used and would simply not say it was going to be employee parking, we became concerned. And the more they balked at giving us assurances, the more concerned we became. So that has taken a month, and the simple has been made complex. But it would appear as of today, we have made progress on this subject. Time will tell, and only the acceptable answers will be in the documentation ultimately coming from all of you, signed by the mayor. The grounds maintenance building is gone. You've heard that, along with a large number of objectionable elements. Some objectionable, objectionable elements remain as a result of some compromises, and there were compromises. In addition, as you can see from the exhibits de at aid that you've heard referred to earlier, we've obtained some reasonable restrictions on their use of the parking lot. We hope that that will do the job. So with that overview, I'm before you along with friends for three reasons. One, to advocate for an attempt to preserve those things that we in Deerfield have agreed to over the past few weeks. Number two, I am here to express concern over the number of parking spaces that will be across the street from our neighbors. And I want to express, along with a few others, great concern over the use of Racket Club Road as a temporary construction entrance for two and a half years. First item speaks for itself. We do appreciate Deerfield's cooperation to get to this point on a number of items, some of which I know they are not happy about. We can say the same. Regarding the 135-car surface parking, the southeast parking lot, you eat and breathe this topic, and I defer to your experience and wisdom certainly more than my own, but my simple question is this. When we started this journey with Deerfield, there were no parking spaces, contrary to what you heard from my friend from Chris. I don't, I don't, I don't know how to reach that. There.
Yep, see it.
This, this is not a drawing that existed in January when we started talking. There were no parking spaces there in January. There was no parking there, at least none that was articulated to us. There was a little building right down here. It was 2,500 square feet. So then, as the grounds building discussion dragged on, 100 spaces appeared. Then, when the grounds building went away in the past month, it became 135 spaces. During that time, the number of living units, AKA apartments at Deerfield, did not change. So I would expect that the number of new employees or overall employees did not change. So what happened to cause those increases in parking? Where did the 135 come from? There seems to be a, a little confusion in the room as to where this project stands. Mr. Palmquist used the term conceptual. This project is far, far down the road from being conceptual. Aspire is a project that I happened to be in this room and watched the presentation of the Aspire project. That was conceptual. What you see now in terms of the development of plans and specifications on this job is not conceptual. They're in at least what's called a stage of construction documentation design development. It means they know what they're putting, they know what they're putting and where they're putting it. They're just beginning to fill in the details. The next step, and they will soon be going there, is to produce drawings that will go to the contractors for final pricing and construction. They know how many parking spaces they need. They just want to get what they can get. That's my clear impression. And I didn't think that until last week. Shame on me. I didn't think that until last week in Planning and Zoning Commission, when it became apparent that people who do this for a living on Planning and Zoning could not get answers to quantify what the engineer in me says ought to be something somebody could articulate. How many spaces do we need? At Planning and Zoning, one senior member of the Deerfield leadership team said, well, we took some spaces from here to do something else and we took some here, so I needed more. Well, that's probably true, but couldn't you say how many more? And that's frankly, all due respect to Chris, that's what we just heard tonight. Why don't you know how many parking spaces you need? So I think the game is, ask for as many as you can get and put them wherever you can put them, just to have them. I'm not sure what, I'm not sure that that's how this body views parking. Finally, the subject of Racket Club Road. Right up here is a rear gate into, access area into our community, and this is Racket Club Road up there on the right. That's the end of Racket Club Road. So you come on down into here, there's a bunch of apartments, a bunch of condos. There literally is a racket club. There are a lot of people that live there. There are a lot of people who walk there of all ages. There are lots of kids and families that are there to play tennis and swim. There's lots of people walking their dogs. It's a pretty active place, but it's a congested little place. And I would encourage you, if you haven't seen it, take a look and you'll see why we're concerned. Residents from the Ramble use this access a lot to get out to Hendersonville Road, no surprise. But a lot of those apartments and condos have no other way of getting in and out. And this entrance, I get it, I'm in the construction business, I understand the need for it, but this means semi, semi trucks, dump trucks.
Thank you.
Concrete trucks. Please take a look at this subject.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker also has 10 minutes to speak, and that's Ada Nicolay. And while you're making your way up here, let's see, we have three people yielding their time, and the first is Mark Noakowski, yes. Barbara Maloney. And William Ipolito. William Ipolito, raising your hand somewhere? Is he here? Raise your hand. Okay, we're ready for you.
Sounds, sounds like a family affair here with the John and Ada Nicolay show. Okay, so my name is Ada Nicolay. I live at 33 Croton Court. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As John said, we watched your meeting a couple of weeks ago. We hope not to keep you here till midnight. Thank you for your service and dedication. And working with the City Council, it has been refreshing to have informative and transparent conversations. I was in government relations for over 30 years and served on many boards. One is the former Chair of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Council on Aging. So I was surprised when we began our discussions that turned into grueling negotiations with an institution such as Deerfield. They have been known as a longstanding institution in the community. But you'll have in front of you, while a nonprofit, Deerfield benefits under lucrative but illegal loophole that allows their $600,000 to multimillion-dollar entry fee model to avoid paying any real estate taxes on their units. So while their expansion does meet a senior housing need, it does not meet, I do know. So while their expansion does meet a senior housing need, it does not meet, I do not believe, your long-term objectives of affordable housing. That's okay. It's their land, and we never opposed their right to develop it for any res, for, we never opposed their right to develop it for their residential purposes that they chose. However, when they insisted on using a two-acre strip of land to put objectable commercial uses, abutting our neighbors' front yards, we did oppose that. As you have heard many times this evening, they have removed one building, which was not desirable, and it had a very negative impact on our community. And this is a personal opinion. I don't think with the tight space that they proposed, it would have been very desirable for their new residents. We heard for over eight months, "We want to be good neighbors," as they pushed more undesirable elements in that area. Definition, good neighbor states, "Communicate openly and honestly. Respect property boundaries and conduct yourself in a manner that will not decrease your neighbor's property value, even if you could, if, even if you cannot see the eyesore." Can you hear the noise from the 35 golf carts buzzing, coming and going, that will be parked there? Employees opening and closing their doors? Are there any harmful fumes? Any runoff to impact the community? This development is between their residence and ours. Unfortunately, we were dealing with an indifferent neighbor, not at all what we were expecting from Deerfield. Thankfully, due to pressure from the neighbors in the Ramble, they reluctantly did the right thing. They did make concessions. Tonight, we welcome any concerns you may have with the additional parking requested by Deerfield that abuts our neighbors' front yards, but ask that you honor the hard-fought concessions and exhibit D and E in the PCC document. Of course, if you are concerned about any other restrictions needed per your expertise, it will be grateful. We're concerned about a 10% allowance that's being granted in reference to this, this project. Moving forward, we look forward to the Deerfield we thought we knew before this project, as they pursue construction, causing over three years of disruption, not only impacting, as John said, our community, but that of a nearby apartment, condo, and swim and racket club community. And a note to Chris. Chris, I love you like a marriage counselor that you are, but I am not going to agree that there will be light traffic with three years of construction. So, but I do appreciate Chris's work very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please let's not make it till midnight.
Thank you. Okay, the next person signed up, now we're back to three minutes, everybody. The next person signed up is Stephen Schoenberger.
Good evening. I'm speaking for Mindy Manti, who's the general manager of the Asheville Racket Club. Her son was sick, and so she wasn't able to make it tonight. And so I will be reading her notes. Good evening, Mayor Madheim, council members and staff. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak. My name is Mindy Manti, and I am general manager of the Asheville Racket Club, and we have two entrances and/or parking lots off the Racket Club Road. I'm here tonight to express serious concerns about the proposed use of the Racket Club Road as a construction entrance for the upcoming commercial project. This road parallels DARC, which has very active tennis, pickleball, pool, and fitness. On any given day, you'll see dozens of pedestrians, families with children, a lot of older active adults, joggers and dog walkers, all sharing space with parked vehicles and steady car traffic entering and exiting the club parking lots. Racket Club Road itself is narrow on both sides of the medians and not built to accommodate heavy construction equipment. Where it meets Hendersonville Road, the traffic light intersection is already a bottleneck. In fact, two nomer-sized vehicles, a sedan and an SUV, can peril, can barely pass through safely at the same time. The idea of dump trucks or flatbeds attempting the same turn raises serious safety concerns and the potential for traffic gridlock. Compounding that, our two club locations will be consolidating into the single-site effect of September 20th, 2025. That consolidation will significantly increase traffic volume, both cars and pedestrians on an already busy and constrained street. Aside from safety, the plan raises quality-of-life concerns for residents and club members who use this road daily. An increase in heavy truck, truck traffic will add noise, vibration, and potential damage to our streets, along with a significant risk to pedestrians and parked cars. I want to make it clear that I'm not here to oppose the project. In fact, we have a strong, positive relationship with Deerfield, and we've always maintained open lines of communication regarding any growth happening with either of our businesses. Out of mutual respect, I am confident that we can come to a reasonable solution that works for everybody. That said, I believe it's important to revisit the construction and traffic plan. I respectfully ask the council and the development team to work with traffic engineers to explore alternative routes that are better suited to handle the volume and the size of construction vehicles, routes that don't compromise neighborhood's safety or livability.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have copies of this if you'd like.
Hand it up to Maggie Schwalbach.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight. Did my three minutes start already? I'm going to talk really fast. My name is Monica Schwalbach. I am a resident of the Ramble community. I have not been on the committee that has been referred to previously with John Nicolay and others. However, I am very interested in what may be planned here with the Deerfield expansion and wish to share some concerns as it pertains to watershed protection. Just a year ago, it was when Helene came and caused devastating impacts to our area. My hope is that it heightened awareness for the need to implement more watershed protection measures, especially in these large development projects. The Deerfield expansion proposes development over a considerable acreage that affects Dingle Creek watershed. Dingle Creek flows through the Ramble neighborhood, so we're downstream of the Deerfield development. And Dingle Creek is already prone to high flows, just with relatively small rainfall Research scientists at the U.S. Forest Service Southern Research Station have predicted an increase in the frequency and intensity of rain events in our area. And this emphasizes the need for us to consider additional watershed protection measures to be incorporated, especially in these large development projects. So while, excuse me, while, while developers have requirements to install catchment basins to hold stormwater, I'm concerned it's not enough, given the proximity to Dingle Creek. Excessive stormwater runoff from Deerfield could cause Dingle Creek to overflow and increase flooding downstream. I urge the council and developer to consider additional watershed protection measures, especially if Deerfield is still essentially in the conceptual phase for stormwater planning. Potential measures would be easy to incorporate during development, including rain gardens, contouring disturbed land to create low berms and swales, or temporary pools, adding structures within diversion ditches or adjacent to buildings. Am I three minutes over?
Thank you. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Cynthia Earl. I live at 272 Racket Club Road, within the 400 feet of the Deerfield expansion project. I have no qualms with Deerfield expanding. Lord, they need to, because lots of us want to live there someday. But I do have a concern about using Racket Club Road as the main construction entrance. You already have heard that the Racket Club facility is along Racket Club Road. We also have courtside condos, the Racket Club Village, Weirbridge apartment homes, South Oaks homes, and of course, the Ramble using that road. It's very narrow, and if you take a trip along Racket Club Road, you will find that coming south on Hendersonville Road and trying to turn right into Racket Club Road is a problem. Cars can barely make the turn, and I cannot imagine construction equipment trying to make this turn. So I would ask the council, and I was glad to hear that Deerfield has engaged some traffic people, but DOT, someone needs to get involved to see if this is really the access road we need for construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Derek Allen. I'm a land use attorney with Allen Stoll and Kilborn. I represent Robin and Mark Hayes. Wanted to point out a couple of things. Councilmember Roney was questioning really how this looks and feels in terms of the application, the site plan, the data that goes along with it. That is because when we normally do CZs, and by normal, I mean always do CZs, you have a lot more information. We are for, on behalf of the Hayes', have questioned the completeness of this application, and we have appealed that to the Board of Adjustment. That Board of Adjustment matter is supposed to be heard on September 22nd. We would take the position that this council hearing this tonight is premature, and that September 22nd, that hearing needs to happen about the completeness of the application. Interestingly enough, it ties into what I'm going to talk about now, which is the fact that we've not had that parking detail that we've been requesting. Had the CZ ordinance been met in terms of the site plan requirements that the CZ application should have and the resulting site plan, we would have those parking minimums and maximums. Today, at 10:45, I got a concept draft parking layout that had minimums and maximums for parking. In that, for the very first time, was mentioned a 12,000-square-foot art studio, an 8,000-square-foot office, 10,000-square-foot fitness center, a retail store, 112-seat restaurant, and a 300-seat movie theater. That's the first time we had seen any of that detail, and that goes exactly to why we filed our appeal that's going to be heard by the Board of Adjustment. And what I wanted to point out for that is that, under our ordinance, UDO 7-7-8C4, no uses shall be permitted except those enumerated in the ordinance adopting the conditional zoning, and those aren't listed anywhere on anything you've seen. The importance about that for the parking is that was being shown to justify the parking places. The parking calculations that we've come up with are 176 as the minimum and 501 as the maximum. Being provided, these are surface parking places, being provided is 334. That number that they're using in the concept draft plan we saw on parking today broke out each of those individual uses as though folks were coming from off-site to use that. That's not the way this facility works. If I'm at Deerfield, I'm a resident, and I'm at the movies, I can't also be at the fitness center. I can't also be at the retail center. You're not generating additional traffic numbers. Once you have accounted for the parking for the assisted-living facilities, the residence facilities, your employees, that's it. That's a captive number. You don't add additional ones to it. So we think that it's being wildly overparked. We don't think that any of the parking in this 135 is needed. That said, we have agreed to a compromise that would allow 100 parking places, provided that they're passenger vehicles, which has been agreed to, with two axles and less than seven feet. Thank you.
Josie Funseca, okay, I'm saying it wrong. Funseca. Funseca. Sorry, they have it spelled phonetically for me, which I'm no good at reading.
Good evening, and thank you all for your attention to this matter with Deerfield. I moved here two years ago from Miami, and I never thought that buying a home that we worked so hard to be able to do would be just 75 or 100 feet away from a parking lot with 135 cars in it. And I think this room is probably about 75 feet long, so you add another 25 feet, and that's how close we would be to that parking lot, literally across the street. So you see that red dot, and you see where the intersection is just underneath it? Like, that's my house. So I'm worried about odors, idling cars, sounds, car doors, cars that drop oil and gas, and then, as my fellow Ramble resident, Monica, pointed out, that stuff being washed into Dingle Creek. So that's one thing. Just as a resident, in a, as a neighbor in a residential neighborhood, I, just living across the street from a parking lot like that, it's, Deerfield was approved to build a two-deck parking lot in 2021, and I heard Chris Day say that they were fearful about finding enough parking spots. Okay, so why don't they build that? That's, that was approved, and it was right by Hendersonville Road, away from all of the homes. So I'm very perplexed, because this is not about dollar, it's really not about dollars and cents. Deerfield is, has plenty of money to do that. I mean, that's not the issue. So, and then the other thing that I wanted to talk about is the, as some of my other neighbors talked about, Racket Club Road. It, you know, there's Weirbridge Village that's right there, and so many of the residents park, parallel park their cars. So in the morning, you see them waiting for people to drive by, waiting to get into their car so that they can leave, and like, it will be either tragic or close to it. If, if, if that traffic is allowed to come in and out for three years or two and a half years, whatever the case is, that, that would be very dangerous and possibly tragic. So I just want to point that out. Yeah, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carla Dix. My husband Claude and I bought our home in the Ramble neighborhood back in 2020. We have two boys, ages 12 and 14. We live at 2 Cleftridge Court. We are direct neighbors, right next to Josie. So we are directly across from the southeast parking. This will greatly affect our lives in many negative ways. We love our neighborhood. It's quiet. It's safe. It's filled with homes, parks, trees, trails, sidewalks, not parking lots, filled with vehicles moving in and out constantly throughout the day, not to mention at night, when there's lighting right across from our home. Just how greatly this will affect us. They're proposing this huge parking lot across the street from our home. This currently is a natural forested area. Why does Deerfield need this much parking? Why right across the street from our homes, when they have so much property to build on? I'm concerned for my family. I'm concerned for my kids that are playing across from this future space. This is not what we signed up for, living in a residential area. Our new reality will be a huge parking lot with constant noise, smells, sights from vehi- vehicles all day long. I can also contend, when I take my kids to school every day, bring them home, that Racket Club Road would be extremely dangerous to have construction traffic going so heavily. There's, as being a traveler on this road every day, there's dogs, people walking their dogs, crossing the street, their cars parked there. It's extremely narrow. Today, I'm asking for you all to please think about this impact, how it impacts us, and also the other surrounding communities off of Racket Club Road. Help us to preserve our neighborhoods, making them safe and quiet places for our families. And thank you so much for your time and listening to us tonight. So, thank you.
And then Jesse Swords. Sword, Swords. I'm saying it wrong. You say...
No, no, that's what I said. Let's make it SNL reference.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jesse Swords. I'm with Allen-Stallman-Kilborn. I work with Derek, and on this, we represent Robin and Mark Hayes. He used my notes to steal all my thunder, as usual, but I just wanted to cover a couple of additional things. Mainly regarding the appeal, why the process is important, okay? And just to remind us, you know, the appeal is about the city not following its own approval process for a conditional rezoning. The process has to be spelled out, and the city has to stick to it to ensure that applicants are being treated fairly and consistently. Fairness is important for many reasons, and I don't think I have to explain that in detail. But basically, if we don't have a firm process, we make up the rules as we go along, and it's impossible to treat people consistently and fairly. I do think master plan-style review seems like good policy, and maybe not just for large phased projects like this, but it needs to be in the UDO. Land use law in North Carolina requires us to write the rules out ahead of time. We can't just make them up as we go along. Thank you for your time tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we have concluded our... Speakers that have signed up speak under this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing. You had, you, so, did you sign up out in the hall when he came in? Oh, did you cede your time to somebody? I'm sorry, what is your name?
Please, C-L-I-D, I spelled it. Oh, okay. We've got you under public comment.
Oh, you're, okay. Please come forward. I will reopen the public hearing. We've got you under the general public comment at the end of the agenda, which all of you are welcome to stay for, if you, if you're just feeling spicy tonight. Okay, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Lisa Klein from the Ramble community. As a biology teacher and concerned citizen, I'm here because Deerfield's proposed parking lot threatens Dingle Creek just feet away. Additionally, maps show two more waterways that flow from the southern portion of the Deerfield campus, where expansion construction is proposed. Field research demonstrates that parking lots create dangerous heat islands. At the same temperature, adjacent woodlands maintain temperatures of 75 degrees Fahrenheit, while parking lots reach 90 degrees. Pavement surfaces become scorching, reaching 122 degrees and up to 155 degrees compared to woodland soils that maintain, that remain at 72 degrees. When rainfall occurs, the superheated runoff flows directly into Dingle Creek, creating thermal pollution that kills trout and endangers salamander populations. Hurricane Helene was our wake-up call. Urban heat islands strengthen storms and alter wind patterns, causing them to stall and dump catastrophic rainfall. We lived this reality just months ago. Dingle Creek is South Asheville's primary drainage, feeding the French Broad River. After years of restoration by Riverlink, how can we inflict another wound on these recovering waterways for institutional profit? The destruction is measurable. Woodland absorbs rainwater in 30 to 45 seconds, preventing floods. Parking lots are impermeable and create instant pollution runoff. One square meter of woodland supports six plant species and countless organisms. A parking lot, one weed, incorrect asphalt. After Hurricane Helene, can we justify destroying trees, our best climate defense? Each tree lost means decades of future carbon storage gone forever. We urge you to choose one of three paths. Vote no on this environmentally destructive proposal. Two, build tiered parking garage near Hendersonville Road and keep construction away from the creeks. Three, if you approve this, demand comprehensive mitigation, rain gardens, broad canopy shade trees like Willow Oak, light-colored pavement, random water quality monitoring, and full Deerfield funding for all environmental impacts and a five-to-one tree replacement ratio. History will judge whether we protected Asheville's natural lifelines. We cannot afford to fail our future, our city, or our planet again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, so, in summary, it looks like, I'm hearing that the kind of final negotiated, need to be negotiated issue of parking, is the parking, and we have one compromise that's already been incorporated into the documents that are, that are before us now. I guess the question would be whether or not we have a motion to approve the project as put forward before us?
I have some questions.
Or questions, which is good. Ask some questions.
I just have a follow-up question for the applicant about lighting. I know it was spoken to earlier, but can we get some more detail? The lighting in this parking lot, does it, can you give them some assurances that it cuts off at night? If, I mean, what's the, what's the reality of living across from a very lit-up parking lot for these neighbors? I know a lot of this is conceptual, but this is really what they want to hear. Am I going to be across from a shopping mall-like setting with big, bright lights, and will they be on all night? And will they flicker and flash? And will I have to get shields from Duke? And all the things that come into play with that.
Good questions. So, the lighting was a huge conversation piece, and when the project started and the whole evolution, it did have a more commercial-style lighting fixture in there. One of the Project E conditions is we're getting our lights from Duke Power. Duke Power has, we have identified the smallest light in their residential category, which has a 12-foot pole. And that's what we're proposing. What the Ramble has on their side, our residential-style lighting, what we have throughout Deerfield, our residential style. We had gone in there, and we actually specced out, in the conditions, a Duke energy model, the spec of what they currently provide, knowing that after sometime, that may change to something similar. We've also gone further to give the specifications associated with that. We will meet the city's dark-skY ordinance, no light spillage over the property line. In fact, in this area of concern, we submitted an exhibit that shows where we went ahead and did a photometric lighting analysis, and it shows that, I don't know if it's in here, Will. There it is. It shows, when you get in here, then start looking at the details.
Close locations?
See how close we can get. Oh, that's as close as it'll go. For, it shows the locations of the light, these tiny little numbers you can see if you zoom in. They reach zero as we get to the edge of our parking lot or fence, and continue to be zeros in terms of foot candles, lights that are coming anywhere close to the property line. So we have, we have kind of a zero foot candle buffer for the whole setback area. And you can even see in some of these exhibits, so here at BB, we show, this is the 12-foot light. So as you come across Racket Club, you've got the Ramble property, you've got their existing fence, you've got our enhanced, with the enhanced buffer, our enhanced buffer, our privacy fence, and then this kind of pink color is intended to kind of take a person's...
That's efficient, Chris. Thank you. It's really...
Sorry.
Well, I was listening to this part earlier, and I was trying to keep up, there's just a lot of details, but, so it does look like 12-foot pole is very helpful.
Yes, this is a 12-foot pole.
And then, your privacy-enhanced buffer you were just referring to, I mean, on the aerial, this is very, this is a very wooded area. So is this being cleared and replanted? Is this...
It is not being cleared and replanted. So I'll say, in one sense, that would be easier, because then we could just say, oh, it's type B buffer, we're going to do it exactly per the code. But what we've done there is we went and surveyed every one of the trees along that entire perimeter area, and we identified them, and then we identified what their critical root zones were. Because unfortunately for the storm, some of those trees have nice canopy, but where the neighbors are looking from, it looks like a telephone pole. And so our goal was to go identify those root zones, and then plant where we could plant on our side, and then go on their side and plant even more. With the fact that some of those plantings are not on our property, the condition was worded so that it was funding those, so that their existing landscape contractor who installs and maintains plants could put that in and help assist with that buffer.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
I had some questions, too. Would the applicant be open to permeable pavement in this parking lot, in the south parking lot, and/or rain gardens surrounding it?
So I will point out, and I appreciate Ms. Schaubach's concerns and comments, and I think I heard another comment regarding the Dingle Creek watershed. We are plant, we are proposing, and the evolution in time associated with this project did give us opportunities to submit more detailed information, including stormwater. There's a conceptual stormwater plan that was not in the original supplemental. It is identifying and showing a series of multiple rain gardens around the site, mostly on the south woods and on the south side, on the wood side.
Is that something you could point to?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So, all of these, that you see, these little blue areas...
Looking through your arrow. Okay, there you go.
Can y'all see my arrow? These blue areas are rain gardens with, and the goal with those rain gardens is to create them more localized, so that we're treating the runoff and allow it to cool. The other great thing about a rain garden is it allows the stormwater and runoff to cool as it filters down through, before it's discharged back into the natural drainage. We also have a larger rain garden here, but then on the upper perimeters, we've got outs, we've got some proposed above-ground stormwater ponds that treat both water quality and quantity. And then, our goal was to protect these wetlands that you see in a little bit darker blue, and streams on the lower side. Some of the upper areas, where we're doing some modifications around the existing building, we are supplementing that with underground detention infiltration devices. But where we can, we're trying to celebrate the stormwater, along with the woods on the south side. That water will be held back. We have to work with the City of Asheville's great staff on holding back the two-year, the 10-year, managing and making sure the 50-year storm works, treating water quality, first-flush, hydrocarbons, all of that. And the City of Asheville requires that Deerfield have a licensed professional inspect that on a bi-weekly basis, and submit in reports to make sure that that's being, besides their own staff who's out doing things, Deerfield is responsible for hiring someone to manage and inspect and provide that information back to the city.
I have a follow-up. So you're a civil engineer. We recently saw a project, sounds like these guys were all watching, where they chose to enhance the stormwater system for a larger event, just because, you know, what we all experienced. Are these, these rainwater systems and stormwater collections and stuff, are they all kind of spec to our current standards?
They are spec to your current standards. Water quality-wise, they go a little above the detention requirement that the city's done, besides just the standard two and 10. The city actually has us hold back the volume difference there, and detain that for 48 hours. And that really creates, it ends up, it seems like a simple statement, but it ends up that the end product is we detain more stormwater than what is also stated in the code. I know that's kind of a ran ambiguous answer, but...
No, it's helpful.
That's our goal. Our goal is to be good stewards, and that's why we went in there and got rid of the previous impacts, and tried to create more localized stormwater treatment measures.
I ask because I know we're going to get new flood maps, and I know that's not necessarily right here, but we are probably going to see changes in stormwater over the years. I would hope so, in response to some of what we've experienced, but since this is a conceptual plan, it just makes me, you know, hope that changes that come about in the next couple of years, ahead of this being built, are actually incorporated into design instead of what we knew today. But I mean, we can't make you do that. It's just, I just wonder if it's going to need more.
I have a question, maybe for Brad, around the process on our end. What happens if the Board of Adjustment appeal passes after the CZ? Are we out of order? Like, what does it mean for the applicant if we need to get that hearing done first?
So, just for context, for those who are listening, as was mentioned earlier on in the public hearing, an appeal has been filed that challenges the administrative decision made by city staff, that the application that was submitted was fully complete. The rule generally is that you must submit a complete application before it can move forward throughout the process. The challenge has stated that it is the allegation that the application was not complete enough for it to move forward, and that's what the Board of Adjustment is going to be hearing in about two weeks. As you have mentioned, Councilmember Maroni, that actually takes place after tonight's version of the legislative process. Currently, North Carolina law does not state that making an appeal to the Board of Adjustment in that context, it does not stay the legislative process, which means that council, if requested by the applicant to move forward, I think the council would have an obligation to provide a timely final vote, one way or another. If the council does so tonight, and the Board of Adjustment proceeds with a final decision, I should note that even that decision can be further appealed up to Superior Court in Buckham County, but that will potentially have an effect after the fact on whatever council decides this evening.
Okay, Council, do you have any other questions, comments, or do we have a motion?
I do still, a little uneasy about the 135 parking spots. I'm just unclear about the information that we got. Sounds like, again, there was no parking with the maintenance building. We were good with that.
100 spots with the maintenance building.
There was 100 spots. I think Chris clarified, there were 100 spots with the maintenance building.
Okay. But the neighborhoods maybe did not see that portion of it. But then it went to 135 spots without the maintenance building. And so, again, on one hand, we're saying, we don't know what we need, but we know we need these, and we know we don't need that for a couple of these things. And then also, I am concerned about the traffic on Racket Club Road, and why are we not using the main entrance of Deerfield to get to your property?
Yeah, I'd love to hear the applicant talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I'd love to hear the applicant talk about that a little bit.
So, I mean, you know, it's, so one thing, it sounds like we would put this completely to bed around the parking issue, well, maybe not for some people, but for more people. If the number of parking spots were reduced from 135 to 100, but, so there's one, there's one, we're hearing that outstanding ask. Do we agree with that, that there, that...
I'm hearing that ask.
There are some folks that are still wanting to reduce that further. So that would be one question. And then the other, and I was actually asking Brad because Racket Club Road is a public road, so I wasn't quite sure what our authority is to regulate any developer's access to property via a public road, since there's obviously development happening all over the city and the county using public roads. But, but, so maybe tell us a little bit more about what our role is in determining how somebody gets to a property to develop it.
More curiosity.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm...
Less regulating.
I don't know.
I'll add just a little bit to that. One is, Will's slide includes the, this is a snippet of the neighborhood presentation that I gave from the very start. While we do not point at this and call out the specific number of parking spaces, it showed, this was where, and actually this one, he's, he's, we've erased the grounds building that sat here, but it was shown as just kind of a gray area with some landscape islands. So we did not get into the specifics as it was refined and showed a little bit more like a parking lot. That being said, the other question about construction traffic and...
So, but you didn't, you didn't say specifically whether or not the applicant would be willing to reduce the number of spots from 135 to 100?
I did not.
Or to kill that entrance altogether?
The entrance...
What?
Well, if they can come down the other area, what?
Wait, we're talking about parking. Are you talking about construction?
Both were asked. Both were asked.
I was going to go in a slightly different direction to answer that.
Well, I was going to make him stick on parking totally. Did you want to...
Let's get answers on both.
So maybe they're going to talk a little bit back there about parking. You know, when you address the construction entrance, a curious thing about this property is that, of course, the property was sold to Deerfield, the same owner originally owned this property, Deer, the Deerfield property to be developed, that owned the Ramble, and in fact, knew that this property would be developed and therefore actually preserved a buffer in fee ownership all the way around it. Very unusual situation. But, but that should have been a, I mean, I'm sorry for anyone who bought in there not realizing this property was going to be developed, but obviously the seller of the property realized this was going to happen because they preserved a buffer so that it wouldn't be less impactful to the neighborhood.
And additional deed restrictions on...
On the use of the property, yes. So a lot of things were put in place to anticipate this very moment, and they're, of course, not here, to, they, you know, they're long gone out of the picture. But I would assume that for purposes of construction, Deerfield can't cross over this fee ownership buffer. They have to access it from the, from wherever they own property.
Correct.
Right? I mean, they can't, the whole U shape around it is, there's a whole strip owned by the Ramble. So the, so if I'm driving a dump truck or whatever, I can't just cross over that strip to go develop the Deerfield property. I've got to go in through somewhere that Deerfield owns property, right?
Deerfield has three access points today, and, and those are remaining in place. So we are, the vast majority of the construction is occurring at adjacent to the existing access point that heads to the city Racket Club Road. I do have, I know engineers are so great at speaking, I do have our traffic engineer here who has been working with Chris Carnes and, and the city NCDOT to, to go in there and look at what Ms. Earl made reference to. The, we recognize that coming south on Hendersonville Road and turning right is a challenging movement, and that's why the, we brought upon, we brought GFT in. They've been working with both of them to look at signal and intersection modifications to address safety at that spot and address exactly what she brought up.
Yeah, it's... There's this one, Bill, it springs.
While we're working that out, Brad, I'm getting a question about RS zoning and whether or not parking areas are allowed. Is that part of the conditions of this project?
Currently, the condition lists, because this has been described as a conceptual plan, which means there's a degree of variance. They have listed both a parking maximum and minimum, but I believe the applicant has suggested that they would alter that to eliminate the parking minimum. So essentially, this would have a cap on how much parking, but they could have anything under that, all the way to zero.
Okay, do, do any updates out there about parking minimums, maximums?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You know, as we currently stand at Deerfield, I can respect that you're getting emails from neighbors about how much parking we get, because even currently, the residents now, we're short on parking on a lot of areas. So we really have a concern. Can we functionally perform what we need to for our residents with less than 135 spaces? But also, so there is great concern. If we do concede, can we, can we, can we handle the amount of traffic and parking we know we'd need to have?
Keith Einsman, oh, I'm sorry. Keith Einsman, Chief Operating Officer, Deerfield.
Okay, so we've got a response that wanting to keep the parking at 135, maximum possible parking spaces there. And we have clarification that the construction entrance will be off of Racket Club Road at the nearest way to enter. It looks like the Deerfield property. People are nodding. Okay. Any, anybody have any other matters to pound out here before we...
I guess, something I'll say is, my peers have heard me from the dais hammer on reducing parking countless times. It's almost a pet peeve of mine. And I've talked with the neighbors. I've spent a lot of time visiting and listening through the whole process. There's something a little bit different about this neighborhood, given it's all folks who are older. I ride my bike as a vehicle. I'm fit, I'm young, I'm able, and that's, that's a blessing. But my 84-year-old grandmother, or mother-in-law, like, she lives less than a quarter of a mile, and she chooses to drive to our house for dinner. That's just where she is in life. And so there's something to me about who this neighborhood is for that has a flexibility on the need for folks to get around in and with around the neighborhood. If it were me at 84 and parking was so tight that I couldn't go to the gym to swim, I might not. I know Grandma Joe wouldn't. So I just want to say out loud that the numbers around the parking, I don't feel super clear on. So I wonder if we could reduce the total maximum so that you all have space to try and move away from this parking lot that our neighbors are so concerned about. But like, are you really going to need 650 parking spaces for this? Could we chop that to 500? And it's not necessarily south parking specific, but it's that in the whole redevelopment of the plan, we're not trying to overpark, but we're trying to be sensitive that your residents can get where they need to go and have the healthy lifestyle they need while having the mobility they need. Would that be an option to reduce the parking maximum?
Well, these aren't, you know, these are not resident parking spots, if I'm correct, correction. I mean, these are for guests and what is the nearest building that someone is walking to if they park in this? Where do they walk, I mean, where's the pool? I mean, if they're trying to drive there and they're parking in this...
I think it's for staff as well.
Yeah, and I'm saying just...
Well, but it's not residence.
I'm saying development-wide, because they aren't, this is different than when we've had a residential neighborhood, and it's like, how many spaces does each apartment get? That's where I'm like, three spaces per unit? Give me a break, you know? I can be really rigid on that. But in a campus, it's not stagnant. Everyone doesn't get an assigned spot. There's, there's flow and ebbs and flows and...
You're exactly right, and I'll let, I'll let Libby or Keith overspeak if I, if I say something wrong. At the end of the day, and I think kudos to Mr. Allen and his team for doing their own traffic or parking analysis. The residential units we're building, they park themselves. So you, you kind of just take them off the table.
Right.
Where the difference maker comes in, and that's what we were trying to show with the additional information and the draft preliminary stuff to say, there's a lot of uses in here. Ms. Bush mentioned the amounts of doctors and service providers that attend here, and our ordinance and our UDO does not capture that. And just like you made reference, we have, we have some, Deerfield has some residents who will take the opportunity and they will walk to the pool. They have some that live out near these individual cottages that live further away, and they're going to get in their car as their mobility declines, and they're going to drive to the fitness center. We, it basically, this micro-community, it's kind of interesting. It's like, it has single-family up on the north in Hendersonville roadside, and then you come in a half a mile, and it has its urban center where all the stuff is happening and all the activities. And then you've got its multifamily that is being proposed in this south woods expansion. And at the end of the day, you know, these folks are, they have opportunities to walk. We, there's paths everywhere. There's opportunities to get on a shuttle, but the vast majority of the people that are coming up here, they need places, they need places to park. So this allows staff to not take up these very precious spots that are at these different activities that occur in a, that have been occurring in the CCRC and will occur in a more expanded and improved fashion as we, as the project grows. This allows staff to come down here. Staff can then be shuttled back up there using their golf carts, they're going to service all over the campus. It, it works well. And I heard one of the, I heard one of the neighbors say when they spoke, compromise. And, and that's really how we looked at removal of the grounds building, but yet coming back with the ability to put some additional parking there as, as the compromise. That's where we're standing.
If I can, Chris is correct that it will be staff parking down in that location, which frees up the spaces where we currently need, because really where I have shortages now is at, around my healthcare center where there's PT, therapy, the clinic. So the residents go to park in that, that center nucleus, but right now, the bottleneck is due to the employees parking that area also. So this 135 spaces frees up those parking spaces for, for employees, which will then be shuttled to their job. But, but then it frees up really where the residents need to park.
And, and I have one other question that I heard earlier was, could we not find places to go park those 35 somewhere else? We spent considerable time, after our neighborhood meeting with 60 people plus present, Libby committed that we would evaluate where we could move the grounds building. And she then put us and the land planners at task, and we scoured the whole property to find a suitable place to go take a 3,200 to 3,200 plus the stuff that was going on around it and put it somewhere else on site, and it was not feasible. It was not feasible without jeopardizing the circle woods or some of these areas that are very precious to what makes the community of Deerfield the special place that it is. That's why after a while, it took a while, it was determined that they could move, they would just move it off-site. So for the same reason, I can't find places to put a grounds building somewhere else on site, that's where I struggle to find a suitable place for parking besides the area that kind of laid itself out real nice for the grounds building site-wide, not for the conversation.
Chris, I have a, I have a question. I think I know the answer, but why not flip it? Why not put the houses on the housing side and then put the parking on the other side? Does that mean that...
Topography.
It's, it's a really good question.
Put the rip on the creek?
Yeah, it's a really good question. And as you see here, we've got streams and wetlands down in here, and while the, the sliver of land that we have here is not suitable to put homes on the outside. And really, in my first site plan, my site visit, they were like, "We would be great with residences here," but I just, I don't have enough room without creating significant impacts.
So I want, one of the reasons I was curious about the permeable surfaces is because I think that it would potentially be a multi-solving of folks who are like, "We don't want really big commercial trucks there." And permeable surfaces are better for folks who are driving their car, personal vehicles. So I thought it might help solve some of those...
I thought that was already in the condition. No, the size of the vehicle that's allowed...
The size of the vehicle is, but, but...
Yeah, okay, just a different...
It creates enforcement by design.
Yeah, thank you. That's a very good way to put it.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Council, are we ready to, are we, are we ready for a motion? Okay.
I move to approve the conditional zoning amendment request for the property located at 1617 Hendersonville Road, zoned, commercial expansion, conditional zone COMEXP-CZ, and find that the request is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, prioritizes greater densities of development overall throughout the city as appropriate, two, ensures a diverse mix of housing to accommodate a broad range of age groups, lifestyle choices, and affordability levels, and, three, realizes goals for an age-friendly community.
If I may, before we have a second, Councilmember Hess, there has been a suggestion by the applicant to amend one of the conditions, specifically condition seven on exhibit E regarding parking minimums. The current condition reads that the project will comply with minimum and maximum parking requirements as stated in UDO Section 7112. I believe they've requested to remove the reference to compliance with parking minimums. So if, if you would like to accept that as part of your motion, an amendment to condition seven to remove minimum parking, parking requirement compliance.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion with that change. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you.
Or we vote. I just want to say that I really appreciate so much work has been done over the years to try to hear each other out on this, and I realize that it's imperfect. But this new understanding means that I'm going to support it.
So I think the purpose of removing the minimum is so that you can go below the minimum?
Yes.
Yeah, but they're capped. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, for all intents and purposes, this may be back, right? I mean, it's been back twice now, so maybe things will change again.
It's been back twice?
Yeah, well, this is the second time.
Oh, I was like, what?
And then it was mentioned that it was talked about for, you know, much other iterations.
We're so close.
Yeah. I, I feel, I feel bad for the neighbors that are going to have to go through the noise. I don't think the lighting's going to be as bad as you think, having seen that side view. But you're going to have construction for a while. It's just coming at you, and I feel bad for you. It's, we're experiencing it throughout the city. A lot of our neighbors are hearing that. We just had a housing study come back that said we're building two and a half times the rate of any other city in the state. So I empathize, and I wish you all well. I believe this is going to be supported tonight. I am going to support it. We do need the housing. I think Deerfield's is doing some exemplary work here. I wish the parking could be somewhere else. It does sound like the original development, even when the neighboring communities were designed, did factor this in. Maybe not necessarily for parking, but the buffer and everything, it's about as great as I've seen anybody get in these kind of situations. So, I mean, for what it's worth, we've seen a lot, lot less and a lot, lot worse protections for neighbors, if that brings any comfort.
Okay, anybody else pushing a comment? Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you.
For the public, will you announce that you're suing us? I don't know, comment that we didn't do?
Oh, for any, for the many viewers on TV tonight, that was unanimous vote approving this item. Okay, we'll give just a minute here for, for folks to leave.
I could certainly use one of those minutes.
Yes, everyone go to the bathroom. Okay, welcome back. The next item is an unfinished business item. It's actually a second reading and final reading on ordinance number 5170. This is an ordinance... This is an ordinance regarding public solicitation and begging regulated specifically to expand defined high traffic zones to include geographic locations on and around Haywood Road, Patton Avenue, and Merriman Avenue. This matter was heard at our last council meeting. We took public comment and it was voted on. And tonight we do not take further public comment, and we just need a motion for our second reading. So I need a motion to approve this item.
Mayor, I'll move. I move to amend existing city ordinance eleven dash five, public solicitation and begging regulated, expanded the areas identified as high traffic zones as outlined in the staff report.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a new question since the last time we heard this. Where does the burden of proof fall if someone, maybe this question is for Brad. Because you're allowed to hold a sign, but you're not allowed to communicate a solicitation in these high traffic areas, where does the burden of proof fall? And how does a person advocate for themselves or receive, like, for example, body cam footage if they need to dispute the allegation?
Okay. Thank you for that question, Councilmember Oney. So in short, the burden of proof will fall on what I'll call the prosecution. Although A P D is charged with enforcing the local ordinances in this regard, matters in terms of handling it after the fact go through the district attorney's office. So it's the district attorney's burden representing the state to prove or to meet their burden of proof in any sort of a prosecution. With regard to people being able to see body cam footage, state law allows any person whose image or voice are captured in body cam to, by simply providing written request to the chief law enforcement officer, which in this case would be the chief of police of A P D, to schedule a time to go and view that body camera footage. There's no cost associated with it, and we do schedule those when people request it.
So if a neighbor who was holding a solicitation signed, but another neighbor was standing beside them, that person could also request the footage?
They they could, to to the extent, only the part that they're captured in it. So again, you you're only allowed to get disclosure of the of the part of the footage that you're in. But yes, as long as they are captured in that, they can request that footage.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you. Okay, counsel, I, I'm sorry.
Do you want us to say that that was, was that six?
Oh, okay, is this our new format? Oh, okay, you didn't, all right.
Well, it's more, it's more inclusive for people who might be hearing impaired or visually impaired.
I'm totally good with that. I just, Maggie, we gotta, we gotta sync ourselves up here. So that vote was a six to one vote to approve the motion. All right. And folks, and I am very sorry, but I'm going to leave, and your vice mayor is going to take over.
Okay, have a good evening. We have one item under new business that is a resolution to allocate 10 million of the affordable housing bond to the W N C Affordable Housing Loan Fund to create affordable rental housing within the city limits, including a loan agreement with Self Help Ventures Fund for the loan administration, underwriting and servicing. And here to present is Sasha Vertinsky.
Excuse me, Sasha, I apologize, counsel. Madam Vice Mayor, since the mayor has left the meeting, it may be a good idea for the council to vote to excuse the mayor, otherwise all her votes will continue to be counted.
I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion to excuse the mayor and have the vice mayor assume the meeting.
Second. Well, did you say and the vice mayor?
And the vice mayor to assume leading the meeting?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
You don't have to add that in, but we do have a motion to excuse. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Pass this unanimously. Do I need to reread the new business? Are we good?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
Sasha.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. I'm here to present a strategic plan for our, or not strategic plan, a strategy for our housing bond and also the first item of implementation of that strategy. A few key takeaways. We've developed this strategy for allocating the $20 million in bond funds approved by voters in November of 24. We're presenting this to your, for your information. You don't have to vote on the entire strategy. We've been invited to join the W N C Affordable Housing Loan Fund, which would leverage our money to enable much larger sources of gap financing for affordable multifamily projects within the city limits. If you approve this, those funds will only be used within the city limits. And we base this recommendation on the housing needs assessment data, the affordable housing plan, and feedback from stakeholders. I'm not going to read through this entire slide, but basically to tell you that we know of at least eight, nine, or 10 projects, affordable housing projects that are looking for gap financing right now. They're in planning stages, and those gads, gaps add up to about $100 million. So we clearly only have $20 million. There will also be C D B G D R funds for these multifamily projects. There will be some state funds for those. So leveraging our money is more important than ever in this, in this context. Just quickly, this is a slide showing how we spent our 2016 bond, which was $25 million. We spent, you know, a little over half on housing units, and that represents $10 million, a little over $10 million on rental units and around 1.8 million on homeownership units. Our plan that we finished just before Hurricane Helene came to our, our city contains many strategies that are related and considers homeownership, rental, and land trust units very important to our community. It doesn't prioritize those items in relation to each other. There are two cross cutting priorities in the plan that help, to help us guide our decision making, and that's prioritizing or incentivizing efforts that meet the greatest need. So lowest income folks, permanent affordability, and folks that need accessible housing. And then the other cross cutting priority is, sorry, I lost myself, is protecting against displacement in all forms. So that's very important. The plan also calls for the formation of a funding collaborative, which is what the W N C Affordable Housing Loan Fund embodies. I won't go into this data really deeply. I know Patrick Bowen was in front of you all last, your last council meeting. We're looking at a gap of around 4,900 rental units for folks at 80% and below, and that's several different income strata, and then 1,200 homeownership units for those same incomes. And so this is our strategy, our thought around implementing our bonds. Given our history, given where we are with different projects, we really see that allocating around $10 million of the 20 million to rental housing makes sense. 3 million we're looking at for city affordable housing projects. You all actually approved 1.5, about 1.5 of this in your June meeting for the 319 Biltmore meeting, 319 Biltmore project, excuse me. We think about $6 million of the of the bond could go to the Housing Trust Fund for homeownership, down payment assistance, and maybe some other uses, so all the uses that aren't rental. And then that leaves us about a million for home repair. We do have another 714,000 for home repair as well, so it's close to 2 million of what we've got right now for home repair. So just really quickly, again, we're asking you to vote tonight on the W N C Affordable Housing Loan Fund, not those other items. Those other items will come before you over the next year.
Thank you so much for highlighting the homeownership that's separate from this conversation as part of anti displacement strategies and stabilizing neighborhoods. We did get a memo from staff about the Talbert lot, so I'll just make sure that's read for the public record. Later this fall, the city will solicit proposals for firms to analyze the 50 Ashland property. For folks who are watching, this is next door to the transit center downtown, and develop conceptual plans for the future transit center and affordable housing on the site. We're referring to this project as Art Place. This will be the first step in a lengthy process to ultimately develop the site, and we'll evaluate options for how the site may be laid out to facilitate transit needs as well as housing and community functions. We expect this Art Place study to take about 18 months after we contract with the planning team. Future actions are likely to include additional planning and site investigation as well as seeking funding and development options. So if you're at the transit center and you notice there's a temporary skating rink beside it and wonder, is this the best use of land? We are also working on expansion of transit with housing on top, which is considered transit oriented development, and it is among the products we're working on.
It'll be fun to ice skate briefly to you.
No ice, sorry.
No, oh, just skating.
I wish.
I guess, so I guess I've been kind of confusing myself and possibly others when I say, oh, we need to make sure we're making enough money for the stuff. But we're really just need to allocate the bond differently, not pull it from this fund, right? Like, when we're talking about, we really want to make sure there's more money set aside for homeownership, we could just reallocate the other pools. I've been confusing us. If I mislet anyone, that was what I was referring.
I mean, it's definitely a council decision for sure. If you decided that 10 million's too much right now for your appetite, then tell us that.
No, I think it's fine. I think when we were hearing it at H C D, we were hearing from other partners in the community saying, make sure there's still a loan pool for us. And I was confusing myself. So this is, this is completely separate, if I mislet anyone else. Anyone else have any more questions or comments for Sasha? I'm happy to make a motion.
Yeah, so at this point, and, you know, we were invited into this fund. We were really excited. I'm going to invite J J Frelick and Tracy Thompson to come up and talk about the loan fund because they're the staff with Self Help that will be administering this fund.
Vice Mayor Mosley, members of the council. My name is J J Frelick. I work at Self Help Ventures Fund. I'm on the commercial lending team. I serve as the housing sector leader. I'm based in Durham, North Carolina.
And I'm Tracy Thompson, an Asheville resident for about 16 years, and working with a commercial lending team as a housing associate. I'm on the deployment end.
Well, thank you for welcoming us to this meeting. So the Western North Carolina Affordable Housing Loan Fund is administered by Self Help Ventures Fund, which is a community development financial institution. We're a nonprofit community development lender. Again, based in Durham, but we operate nationally. The fund right now is currently entirely capitalized by the Dogwood Health Trust through both a grant and a loan to Self Help Ventures Fund. And the fund, we launched it, it was in origination in 2024, and we launched it in the beginning of 2025, and the deployment has really leapt out of the gate with one loan closed already, 19 million in origination, and 18 billion in leads, and that $40 million total fund. To give you a sense for where Self Help is in terms of its affordable housing loan funds, we have five funds active across North Carolina, two funds in development, and two of the existing funds are already growing. So currently, $143 million under management. We're anticipating with potentially this growth to see $234 million by the end of the year, or maybe early next year, in terms of the total fund size. I think most helpful that I, perhaps for the council, folks watching, is to talk about how does this affordable housing loan fund work? It's really all around combining risk capital and senior debt, that's from public or philanthropic subsidy, mixed with senior lenders coming in, as typically have been Community Reinvestment Act funds from major banks, and and using that capital to do things that conventional lending really can't do. In the case of the Western North Carolina Affordable Housing Loan Fund, the difference is the fund is currently fully capitalized by Dogwood Health Trust. They're providing both the risk capital and the senior funds. This loan is Fair Haven Meadows, based in Brevard, North Carolina. It's basically a million dollars of subordinate gap financing that made this project possible along with the rest of the financing. And really focusing here on, we're leveraging scarce subsidy to really make a project happen and bring in outside capital into the region. This provide financing for a 42 unit affordable rental housing property. It's leveraging low income housing tax credits or L I T E C. And the rents are restricted to this to extremely low through low income folks. And that's where you see the 40% of area median income, 60% and 70%. So that's the level of households that are supported by this property. It's very difficult to do, and the way this was done was used, again, by pulling in tax credit equity, which is a national program, sub debt from the city of Brevard, home funds, and then a senior debt, a first mortgage from a bank. But the problem was there was still a million dollars worth of gap here. And so that's where the Western North Carolina Fund came in, providing that million dollars of gap financing to help the project take place. So that's, that's a good example of the type of projects this fund can support. This one's in Brevard, but we do have significant pipeline here in Asheville as well.
And as J J mentioned, the conversations on this fund started earlier last year before the storm, and then a full deployment happened earlier this year. And $40 million total fund, 20 year, with the seed money by Dogwood. And just a high level summary, provides low cost flexible financing for affordable housing developers to compete with those market rate developers that are out there. And it leverages and extends scarce local housing focused capital. And J J mentioned the, what's already in the pipeline for the Western North Carolina Affordable Housing Loan Fund. So that I just did a snapshot of what's in the pipeline for Asheville. And as you can see, it runs the gamut from acquisition to rehab to those new construction, 9% L I T E C projects. And for some totals, we have currently 11 million in leads, 7 million in origination. So there's a total loan request of 18 million currently for Asheville. And then we're looking at 318 units in the pipeline. And I think we are turning it over to Sasha.
Thank you. So from the staff perspective, we've got several benefits of investing in this loan fund. As you know, low interest gap financing is challenging for many projects. So by us joining this loan fund and partnering with Dogwood, we can leverage our 0% loan. So we would be loaning $10 million to Self Help at 0%. And then they can leverage that, they can mix that with other capital sources that may come in at higher interest rates to be able to provide kind of that low interest rate to developers. It streamlines and consolidates the application process for developers. It will, should increase the amount of projects that our money goes to. So our money should be able to go further. And, you know, they are able to process loans much, a little bit faster. They've got more capacity, and they've got, you know, years of experience in making loans that we don't have. And I should say, I didn't put this in the presentation, but they will be making quarterly updates to us, and they would come to city council once a year to report to you all on how the loan fund is doing. We did take this idea to several groups of stakeholders. The first one being like multifamily developers who were really in favor of this. You know, we invited folks that have, we have loans with or we know have projects in the planning stages. We also met with developers who build for homeownership. They were kind of concerned about making sure there's enough money for homeownership. And there were also concern, and then we also met with advocates. And and one of the concerns that came up was making sure that we keep that source of non, source of income non discrimination clause in our agreements, which Self Help has agreed to. They don't have a problem with that. And there was a desire to have this loan fund fund homeownership, or just, they're not at that point right now. That might be something that comes at another time with a different loan product. Because of the concerns around funding, we reorganized how we, we had sliced out homeownership separately. And so we consolidated our loan buckets, gives us a little bit more, for the, this is for the non W N C Loan Fund part of our bond strategy. So we reorganized our bond strategy to be a little bit more flexible and to make sure that there's enough homeowners, money for homeownership. Yes. So I feel like I've said all the pros, that I've told you all the pros, like, the things that you might see as cons is you would no longer be seeing individual loan decisions come to this body. They would be, rest at Self Help. So Self Help will be doing all the loan processing, application, underwriting, all of those activities. We think there's, you know, obviously more pros than than cons to this and could really leverage our money. So, next steps. If you approve this allocation, we'll work with self help staff to develop a loan agreement between the Self Help Ventures Fund and the city of Asheville. And then throughout the next year, we'll be bringing additional initiatives for playing out that bond strategy. One thing I do want to mention, in the documents for this item, there was a mistake in the resolution where it said at least 20% of the units will be affordable to at or below 60% area median income. What it should have said is that these loans made with our money will be for low and moderate income housing and in projects where there is market rate housing. If it's a mixed income project, there will be at least 20% at 60%, which is in line with the state bond legislation.
20% at 60% headline.
Which is how, you know, we approached 319 Biltmore once.
It's even better than what we usually. It's even better than what we usually do, because we usually get to 80. Yeah, AMI.
Right. So, but they don't anticipate that being a problem. I think the majority of the projects that come through are 100% affordable.
So one of the questions I asked you in HCD, and I know you answered, and now I can't remember what you answered, but I asked, "So we anticipate that an applicant for this fund will not be seeking additional funding?"
From us.
From us.
For rental, we won't have additional funding opportunities.
Okay. And then I also asked if the county has been asked to participate in this fund, and are they participating?
I mean, what I, what I can say, or, and I can let them speak if you want, I know that Tracy actually gave a presentation to their Affordable Housing Committee. I don't think they've made any decisions.
I'm not sure if they have funding. Yeah.
I have a question about the source of income discrimination. So for folks who are new to the conversation, we know that people in our community are being denied the ability to sign a lease because of how they pay their rent. So if they're paying with child support payments or a voucher, veterans assistance funds, any legal tender, they can be denied the ability to sign a lease because we don't provide that as a protected class for housing access, unlike Virginia. And in fact, the state legislature has prevented us from protecting source of income discrimination. So I had hoped that because the Human Relations Commission, a couple of years back, made a recommendation that even in the absence of being able to enforce it, we should have a process for people to file their complaints. I'm so grateful we have this voluntary commitment, but where would someone file a complaint if they felt they were being discriminated against based on their source of income?
I think I know the answer, but I'll let you.
So, I think that's an excellent question, Councilmember Roni. Right now, as you've alluded to, the state generally controls fair housing issues. There is actually a state, I believe it's called the Human Relations Commission in Raleigh that actually deals specifically with housing issues, housing complaints. Based upon discrimination can be submitted to them. Right now, the state has yet to take up the issue of including source of income as a protected class, but I would certainly recommend everyone reaching out to that body. And in fact, our own city staff in our, I think newly-called Human Relations Anti-Discrimination and Compliance Department has offered to assist people with reaching out to the state to file those complaints.
So similar to like that whole burden of proof conversation, you should probably send an email, so it creates a public record, and you're suggesting you would send it to our city department, so we probably want a process for that.
Yes. Right now, we do have, as, as council knows, a nondiscrimination ordinance that's been adopted by the council applying to the city. For the reasons that we've already discussed, we don't include in there as an option to file a complaint locally dealing with housing discrimination. But when those complaints come in, if you want to help submit, I believe our office will help direct you to the right place in the state where those complaints can be filed.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments for Sasha?
My only comment is excitement. I think this provides a lot of leverage. I also think it could be nice, when this comes back to council, for us to set up some type of cadence to see the data, because I know you guys are going to track it. That's your business, and it's a way that I know that sometimes, because we're so busy doing all the work as our city staff, that getting the information, so a quarterly update or an annual presentation, whatever would make sense, but I'm like already hungry to see what we're going to learn by having a bigger picture, so that it can inform our policymaking. So that'd be a request.
Is this where I say SelfHelp account holders get those updates regularly mailed to their houses? A little plug for SelfHelp. No, I'm really thrilled that we're here at this stage. I feel like we're, our affordable housing efforts are growing up or maturing in some ways, you know? I was at some of the volunteer tables this first time, we're talking about loans and how to do it, and who should get it, and how does it all work? And I just think this is wonderful. And I'm happy to see SelfHelp.
Does that mean you're ready for a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion, and I'm happy to see SelfHelp establishing themselves in Western North Carolina, and particularly Asheville. So I moved to approve the allocation of 10 million of affordable housing bond funding to the Western North Carolina Affordable Housing Loan Fund to create rental housing affordable to low- and moderate-income households within the city limits and authorize the city manager to execute a service agreement with SelfHelp Ventures Fund for the loan administration, underwriting, and servicing.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is no one signed up to speak. Those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Final item for us this evening is informal discussion and public comment. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. First on our list is Steve Legay, followed by Dave Mittler.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Very much appreciate it. My name is Steve Legay, and I commend the Asheville City Council and Buncombe County Commission for their boldness and initiative in launching a community reparations process to address the systemic and ongoing harms associated with racism in our community. With almost no precedent to draw on, the Community Reparations Commission has done outstanding work documenting the harms done to Black people rooted in the history of enslavement, Jim Crow laws, the Black Code, segregation, and more. The Stop the Harm Audit has shown clearly that those harms are not just relics of the past, but rather contemporary characteristics of community social life. That audit also presented a huge opportunity for city and county governments to lead in the push toward equity and justice. The Reparations Commission has worked diligently for literally years, demonstrating these harms through empirical research, as well as through documented community experiences. They are to be commended for their dedication and painstaking work. They have done their job and done it well. They deserve our thanks, admiration, and support. The resolutions passed by city and county in 2020 supported reparations for Black residents. They acknowledged the historical harm caused by discrimination. They acknowledged the role that both city and county played in perpetuating slavery, segregation, Jim Crow, and urban renewal displacement. They issued a formal apology to the Black community for these harms. Most importantly, they outlined concrete steps to be taken to end those harms and dismantle current systemic barriers. They established the Community Reparations Commission, staffed it, and specified priority areas to be addressed. In short, reparations were not to be just pledges and promises and words, but rather concrete action steps to bring about change. I would respectfully ask both council and commission to closely review their own resolutions once again. They center on an explicit commitment to recognizing and rectifying harms and developing policies that continue the push toward justice. As Dr. Mullen has stated, it is rarely convenient and often dangerous to do what is right. That would appear to be doubly true today, when the current federal administration and the Department of Justice, no less, has pledged to investigate and block Asheville and Buncombe Counties reparations processes. That administration has shown ignorance of and contempt for multiple articles of the Constitution, multiple constitutional amendments, the separation of powers, the rule of law, and more. The people of Asheville and Buncombe County do not support these violations, nor do we support federal troops or investigators patrolling our streets, and we reject this effort at suppression. I call upon you to exercise your leadership in resisting this threatened investigation and intimidation directed at local decision-making. We will stand together and we will continue the fight for justice.
Thank you, Mr. Legay. Dave Mittler, and followed by Roy Harris.
Good evening, folks. Dave Mittler, Asheville City Watch, soldiers to our Constitution. I have been reaching out to the chief for two weeks, have had nothing, not even a response from the secretary. What we are wondering with this ICE situation, what we want to know is, has there been any directives or protocols put down by city manager, the boss, chief police, on how they are to handle when they watch these abductions from ICE? I have vetted a few officers, and I get the same response, which is, they have authority. That is a fact, when they follow the law. So what we are concerned with in the coalition is, are the police going to uphold General Statute 1439, which is abduction, kidnapping? When they actually witness a blacked-out vehicle, 30-day temporary tags pull up, start pulling people into a vehicle? Everybody has, can get a flak jacket, anybody can get a badge. I would hope that the answer, if I ever get from the chief or city manager, that if the police are witnessing this, that they make it a point to ask these individuals for identification. Proof is in the pudding. California's already had abduction and rapes. Washington D.C. has already had it. We can't have that in our city. Can't. I would hope some of you have seen Justice Sotomayor's response to the Supreme Court, which has ruled that our tyrannist man up there can now just pull people over by how they look. Federal judges had ruled weeks ago that ICE cannot abduct people by appearance. SCOTUS has just changed that. So I would like to know where our city stands when ICE is doing their work but not following the law? Are the police going to at least make sure that these people are identified, who they are, and what they're doing in the city? Do we have any answer on that at all? No?
So typically, typically, council or staff doesn't respond to public comment in the moment. But feel free to leave an email or a way we can contact you.
Would you like to respond?
Decorum says that we don't in this moment, but if you leave an email.
Folks, let's, let's be real here, okay? I appreciate you and respect you with decorum. We're all Americans here. I would love to hear from one of you what you feel about this. You, you watch the real news, I'm sure, and see what's happening in our country.
Thank you.
None of you want to answer that?
Up next is Roy Harris.
I take that for a no.
Followed by Kendra Miller.
Y'all should be shaking.
To the council, and to the mayor, and to staff and everything, thank you for sticking around and to hear me out. When I came here tonight, I was like, I just wanted to say one thing about the reparations is that I know you were just accepted in the night, and since you were just accepted in it, you have one of the best lawyers in the state of North Carolina that can help you fight through whatever we've got to go through this. He's here and I've seen him work. But, let me give you a quick story, quick, two-minute story. Tomorrow, September 25th, I'm walking out of my house, walking 150 yards, get on the ART bus, go downtown, connect with the Greyhound bus. Once I connect with the Greyhound bus, I'm either going to Charlotte or I'm going to Raleigh. And when I get to Raleigh, I got to figure out how to get to the Amtrak bus or the Amtrak train. I'm going to meet up with my siblings, my sister. We're headed to what they call an elope wedding reception in New Jersey. But the trip back, when I come back from New Jersey, I'm coming back to Raleigh and I'm headed to my hometown. And when I head to my hometown, I'm now starting to look for other places maybe to live. I may come back to Asheville, I don't know yet, but my kids and my grandkids are encouraging me that I need to come closer to them. So when I get back here, what I'm afraid about is that when I top that mountain, if I come back to Asheville, I won't be able to afford it. I won't be able to afford a house. I won't be able to afford apartments. I won't be able, on a limited income. So the Affordable Housing Coalition, go to work so if I ever come back to Asheville, I can find a place to live here. Because I'm afraid of that. I'm afraid that once I leave my neighborhood, go to the end of the street and say, "Bye-bye." I have no reason to ever come back to that neighborhood. I don't know anybody, I can't afford it, and I just have to keep looking. Y'all have done a great job. Keep it up. Oh, I got a dog in all these fights. I didn't think I had a dog in these fights when I came in here tonight, but I got a dog in Affordable Housing Coalition. And I wish that we had been around when urban renewal was taking place, so that we could have argued the way we argued in here tonight. And then I got, I got to the end, I'm like, "We arguing about parking spaces." My people were arguing then about what, housing? Whether or not I-26 or 240 came through their neighborhood on the south side. We argued about all, all of the houses that got wiped out. Oh, I looked out my window the other day, and the house across from me went for $550,000.
Thank you, Roy. You come back now, you hear? Up next is Kendra Miller, Miller, followed by Thessa Pickett. Hello.
Hello again. It's good to see you all. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Roni and Hess for seeing the big picture on voting for what they believed was best for Asheville in regards to 9395 Springside Road. Your votes have not gone unnoticed, specifically in South Asheville. That said, I was deeply discouraged at the meeting two weeks ago by the process in which the Springside neighborhood was asked mid-meeting to negotiate a develop, with the agreement with the developer. I found this to be both unethical and unfortunate, particularly because many of the stakeholders that you heard from that night were speaking on greater concerns for Asheville and not slight changes to already bad site plan. However, on top of this, no mailed public notice was provided for that August 26 meeting. And this leaves me concerned that some of our key voices in the community were excluded from that discussion that night. All of this being said, I know that we need to move forward, and that's what I want to do today, is I want to make sure that we're moving forward to the future. So at the last meeting, Mayor Manheimer, she asked me if our community had the stamina to continue to fight for Springside Road. And I'm here to tell you that we have the stamina. I do. I'm here, as many of my neighbors are going to continue to fight for making this road as safe as possible, for students, for families, and residents who use it every single day. Now that conditional zoning for 9395 Springside has been approved, safety improvements must be a top priority. As you mentioned, Springside is currently ranked low on the city's pedestrian master plan. Yet despite this low ranking, there is no funding identified and no timeline in place. Development and traffic are increasing immediately, but without a clear commitment in the capital improvement program, safety upgrades could be delayed for years. Safety isn't a problem for the future, it's a concern for right now. Just a few years ago, a student was hitting a crosswalk around TC Robertson. And just this last spring, another student was nearly hitting a crosswalk on overlap. The driver swerved to avoid the middle-school girl and hit a lighted crosswalk sign instead. Despite many messages and app notifications, this has yet to be replaced. So you can see how we as citizens in this community are concerned that our safety and those of our children is not at the forefront of our mind. That's why I'm here tonight. I urge you to take leadership, to prioritize safety on Springside Road, and accelerate funding through the city's capital improvement program within the next year, not the next decade. Families, students, staff should not have to risk their lives walking, driving, biking to and from school simply because infrastructure has not kept the pace with the growth.
Thank you. Thessa Pickett, followed by Matt Zimmerman.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, and fellow city, or ladies, city councilmembers. I apologize. My name is Thessa Pickett, and I'm the lead administrator for Friedman Reparations Fund Tr- Trust. And I'm here today to strongly urge you to center accountability, equity, and protection for freedmen in Asheville communities. Without a rigorous verification process, these programs and funding risk redirection, dilution, fraud, waste, and undermining the very trust of our communities and places within this council. The Department of Justice has recently raised scrutiny referencing DEI and other racial terminology, and we echo that concern while being a constitutionally-protected class, which deserves federal and constitutionally-sound safeguards and verification processes. The Freedmen Reparations Fund Trust has developed a verification system to ensure compliance, eliminates broad waste, and directs benefits only to those intended. The process also removes any race-based indication. Again, the process removes any race-based indications, securing protections under the federal and constitutional law. Further, the trust also, or already holds, formal FOIA acknowledgement under the US Department of Treasury. Case number 205, I'm sorry, no, case number 2025-FO-00112, confirming recognized authority in the matters of reparations and freedman verification. Asheville now has the opportunity to align with the framework already federally acknowledged. We fully support and recognize the important work the Community Reparations Commission and this community, and the broader community, has undertaken on behalf of Asheville. Their commitment has laid a strong foundation for meaningful progress, and this is not about creating another enterprise. It is about ensuring justice, compliance, and sustainability for freedmen. We urge the Reparations Commission, the city of Asheville, and the county to work with us to implement this process in partnership, so that together we can build a model of justice that cannot be undermined or diluted. Let future generations look back and say, Asheville chose justice. And today I ask that you send all of your further questions or inquiries to our pending meeting requests sent to each one of you via email Monday morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Ms. Pickett, thank you. Thank you so much. Up next, Matt Zimmerman.
Hello, City Council. My name is Matthew Zimmerman. I just wanted to thank you guys so much for your support with our UNCA Save the Woods project. And also, yeah, can't really say that without giving a little bit of history of what recently happened to me. Actually, I had my admissions revoked. So, three weeks ago, we had a SGA meeting, and I brought up, we had a new, basically, they stopped the development on the woods, and they said that they would have a council that was set up with students, and, well, they didn't say students, but I wanted to have that be part of the table, so I advocated for that. I also brought up the fact that they fired our dean of students over the summer, as well as emailed a bunch of our transgendered students that they had to change their housing based on their gender. So, I definitely feel like I was targeted for that, and so it's like the most I can do to speak up, and it really is important work that they're doing. So I want to continue to be a bridge between UNCA students and you guys as much as I can. I also, you know, wanted to speak up a little bit about the panhandling of vote. I just hope that any more ordinances that come up that are against, you know, our homeless population, that we really kind of take some time and consider those things, that maybe it's an issue of the streets, and maybe it's an issue that we can, you know, maybe not focus on what is not the issue of being homeless people. Maybe get them some more housing. It's great that we're talking about all these housing initiatives, but I think that plays a big part in all that. So, yeah, I do appreciate your time, and thank you so much, Kim Roni, for your support with that. And I hope that, again, in the future, we're going to have a lot more of these ICE arrests. So anytime that we have the possibility to have homeless people get arrested, that's a real good possibility that you could lose somebody forever. So, yeah, anyways, thank you so much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Soran Peterson.
Hello, councilmembers. I've been watching online for most of the night, so it's nice to finally get here in person. I am speaking because next Tuesday, the county commission will be voting to schedule the 2026 property tax reappraisal process. Because of the delay to the timeline that has been caused by Hurricane Helene, and because of the rapid growth in real estate prices in the Asheville area since the last reappraisal, county staff has estimated that the assessed value, the average property, is only 60% of its true market value. For Asheville, what that means, based on Asheville's fiscal year 2026 budget, is that the city could see as much as $60 million in additional tax revenue without increasing taxes, based on what that estimate was in this year's budget. Even half of that, $30 million, would be the single largest increase in city revenue in, as far as I can tell, city history. I mention this because 37% of the city of Asheville's employees, those people who go out and pick up trash, or enforce the law, or work on the recovery for Helene, or those that manage the building, 37% currently do not make a living wage for the city. The estimates vary. The average rent for a year right now ranges between $19,000 and $27,000 a year, but even on that lower estimate, our employees are asked to make a choice. Either live in the city that they work to maintain, work to make a better place, or, excuse me, live outside the city that they work to maintain, or live in the city and absorb that cost, dig into their own savings, not build towards whatever personal items they wish to have because all of their money has to go into the cost of living. I bring this up now, I know I've come in the past and talked to many of you, many of you individually and as a group, because this should be the front of mind for whatever number we see out of the budget reassessment. The actions of the city council, the goals that we have as a community, the goals that you have as individual members, do not get achieved unless there are good people working on the ground to implement those policies. I would love to help with that. Something that I know has been a shortcoming of mine in the past is bringing this up once the budget has already been in the process of being set. So all I ask of you now is that as we go into tax reassessment season, year, that you look at the fact that the employees that work every day to make the city a better place need to be a part of our community, and not just people we ask to come in, serve us, and leave. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And council, that's our final speaker. We're going into closed session. Does that mean Councilmember Hess, you have a motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Brad. I move that the Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina were not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the general statutes. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute Chapters The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute Chapters 143-318.10E. And two, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the city of Asheville, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute Chapters
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
We'll adjourn from here. We'll adjourn from closed session.
Okay. We adjourn.
From closed.